Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order Monday, October 17th, 2022. Thanks for being with us, both in person and online. We'll start our meeting as we always do. If you could, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and again, thank you all for being with us this evening, council. It feels like it's been a while, so good to see everybody again. Thanks for being here tonight. Our agenda this evening actually has a number of different things. We have, under our introductory items, we have an introduction of new employees. We have a proclamation for our Friends of Libraries Week, a presentation from our Bloomington, from the Historical Society, folks, about Bloomington's notable residents, and a review of our 2022 community survey results. Our consent business is lengthy. Councilmember Coulter is going to be giving us 20 items under the consent business. Hearings and resolutions, we have one public hearing, and it's an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the city code related to parks and playgrounds. Once we move to our organizational business, we have our time-of-sale program update. We're going to have a discussion on our proposed 10-year capital improvement plan, 2023 budget discussions, which will include a variety of different funds, also a budget discussion for our information technology fund budget. We're going to have an artistry update to the city council, and I don't think item 5.6, our city council policy and issue update, was officially on the agenda that went out. So I would like to do a couple of things, if I may, council. First of all, I'm going to add item 5.6, our city council policy and issue update. And then, if it would please the council, I would like to move item 5.5, the artistry update, to the city council, if we can move that just before the consent business. We do have a number of items under introductory items, but if, I think if we move that, that item of pretty high interest, if we move that up just after our introductory items, I think it would benefit our presenters and the council and the members of the public who are interested in this issue. So, council, any other suggestions or changes or corrections to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I will move tonight's agenda with the changes as stated.
Second.
We've got a motion to, and a second, to approve tonight's agenda as stated. Hearing no further council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. We have an agenda. Item 2.1 is our introduction of new employees, something we've been doing on a regular basis to make sure that we introduce our new employees to the, not only to the council, but also to the public on camera, so the folks that they're seeing either at city hall or on the street, they, they recognize them in their familiar face. And we are going to start today with Amy Chaney, our CIO. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Lizzie Potts. So Lizzie joined the IT department in August of this year. She is our office support specialist, and she was, ah, she's responsible for purchasing and maintaining software maintenance agreements, and she also does a variety of support for the internal IT department. Lizzie is a lifelong Minnesotan, and she and her grandparents have lived in Bloomington for almost 70 years. She's a former teacher and school librarian. She has taught in schools across the Twin Cities, where she's worked with students from kindergarten to 11th grade, and her, and next spring, she will be graduating from St. Kate's with her master's in library and information science. Welcome, Lizzie. Do you want to say a few words?
Thanks, glad to be here. Nice to meet you all.
Well, thank you, Lizzie. Thanks for, for being here. What propelled the move from, from education to, to city government?
I kept getting laid off.
Ah, well.
Trying to find something more stable.
Well, good, welcome aboard. We're very glad to have you. Thank you for being here today.
Their loss is our gain.
The reality of teaching today.
Yes. Thank you. Good of you to be here, thanks. We also have Carla Henderson, our Community Development Director, has an introduction for us today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before I introduce what I hope to be our new city assessor, if all goes well, on our consent agreement agenda, item 3.2, just so you're aware, I really wanted to take this opportunity to talk about how we got here. So last July, shortly after our former city assessor had submitted his resignation, I met with Kent Smith, and the first thing he said to me was, "I'm not interested in the job." So as we continued our discussion, Kent shared with me that he had planned to retire in September, and as we discussed the timeline for hiring a new assessor, Kent agreed to postpone his retirement and stay until April. I would like to use this opportunity to publicly thank Kent for his leadership, dedication, and commitment to the city of Bloomington, its residents, community, and stakeholders. Kent provided us with the gift of time, and for that, I am grateful to him. So I hope he's, I know he's at home watching. Thank you, Kent. I just wanted to say that because I know he'd much rather be riding his bike somewhere, and here he is to allow some overlap with our, hopefully, new city assessor. So with that being said, I would like to introduce you to our new city assessor pending approval, Tim Bulger. Tim has a degree from U of M in applied economics and started his career at Scott County as a residential appraiser. He continued in the residential area with the city of Minnetonka and then went to Hennepin County, where he worked as a senior commercial appraiser before, before returning back to Scott County as their deputy county assessor, where he has served for the last four years. Tim was recently installed as the 2023 president of the Minnesota Association of Assessing Officers. The husband to Jolene and father to Bryn, in his spare time, he enjoys riding along bike trails, eating at local restaurants, and playing golf. So I'm super excited to introduce you to him.
All right, well, thank you for the introduction, and that word pending was used far too frequently. I'm just excited to be here, and I completed my first day today and met with many smart, dedicated, and friendly staff here at the city. I'm very excited to continue that journey. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Tim. We're very glad to have you in, in a very important role, as we're definitely learning over the past few years, the importance in the, how vital a good city assessor is. So we're very glad to have you onboard and welcome.
Glad to have you. Thank you.
Both Tim and Lizzie, welcome onboard. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Next on our agenda is item 2.2. It's a proclamation for the Friends of Libraries Week, and I'm going to head down to this podium and do this. Well, as I said, tonight's proclamation for is National Friends of Libraries Week, which is October 16th through the 22nd, and I'm guessing I'm not the only one here who spent many, many, many hours in the library when you were a kid, and considered myself as a friend of the library for many years, and the library was my friend for many years, and it was, it was, it was always a great place to be. And so it always makes my heart happy to talk about libraries and to recognize the importance of libraries and recognize the importance of the people who support libraries and make them such a great place. So I'd like to call up Judy Basso, Ann Ryan, and Carolyn, and then Carolyn, I'm sorry, I missed your last name. Come on up and join me while I read our proclamation, and we'll do the, the whole-picture thing and everything, so come on, make sure, yep, don't be shy. Here we go. Proclamation, National Friends of Libraries Week, October 16th through the 22nd, 2022. Whereas Friends of the Penn Lake Library raise money that has enabled our library to provide for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights how our libraries are the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library set an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. And whereas, in honor of National Friends of Libraries Week, on Wednesday, October 19th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., the monthly Friends of Penn Lake Mystery Book Club will welcome bestselling Minnesota author Brian Freeman for a discussion open to the public of his book, The Deep, Deep Snow. And whereas the Friends invite the community to a special event to close National Friends of Libraries Week on Saturday, October 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Penn Lake Library, when kids can cuddle up with a certified therapy dog, practice reading aloud, or have a story read by a Bark Avenue on Parade volunteer. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim October 16th through the 22nd as Friends of Library Week in the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, and call upon the people of Bloomington to join the Friends of Penn Lake Library and all Hennepin County libraries, and thank them for all they do to make our libraries a vital part of this community. Signed this date, the 17th of October, 2022. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks for you and for the work that you do, making our libraries a better place and our community a better place. And as I said, I have such fond memories of a library, and I know there are so many people that do, and I know that there are so many people who are having, building wonderful memories now because of the work you do. So thank you all so very, very much. So, Matt, are we going to do an official picture here?
Yeah.
Let's step to the side here, so we can get up from behind the microphones. Item 2.3 on our agenda is an interesting one and a special one that I've been looking forward to since we first had this discussion not too long ago. It is a, a presentation on Bloomington's notable residents, and we have two folks here who know a little something about being notable in Bloomington, obviously, but who have done a great deal of work, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Don, and just let you talk your way through this. Welcome, good evening.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here, and greetings to Mayor Tim Bussie and staff and residents who are watching. My name is Don Heinzman. I'm a retired journalist living in Bloomington. With me to my left is Jean Belfei, a curator of the Bloomington Historical Society Town Hall Museum. Tonight, we are announcing a project that we have prepared for this community. The project is three books like this with, inside are leaders and residents and high achievers, and the album is dedicated to Tom Burnett Jr., a real hero from Bloomington. You know the, the story of Tom Burnett, at age 35, while he was traveling on a passenger plane, a terrorist took over the plane, and Tom led other passengers to seize the, the terrorist, and they crashed the plane, and that is supposed to have been headed for the Capitol, the US Capitol. Jean? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm impressed with Tom Burnett. I wondered who else in Bloomington might have, would deserve to be honored as he was? And so what I did is I went to two social networks, and I asked for nominees of other people who could be honored like he was. And to my amazement, because what I'd suggested is that I would, I expected about 10 nominees, and what do you think? There were 70 nominees. I thought, what am I going to do with this? So I turned to Jean, and she took over.
So I noticed that Don's request for nominations were predominantly professional athletes who grew up in Bloomington, and I wanted to see the nominations to become more diverse. So I nominated Mary Grandprey. She was my neighbor growing up in Bloomington. She illustrated the Harry Potter books. And so this is how Don and I connected. We realized that a collaboration would be mutually beneficial. The information about well-known Bloomington residents would be helpful when we give tours to scouts and other youth groups and other people that come to the museum. We set some parameters, because this could get out of hand pretty rapidly, and the accomplishments would be made after 1960, when Bloomington became a city. The athletes would need to have competed at the professional or Olympic level, and we decided to use the description of notable rather than famous, because we felt that there would be some people who would deserve recognition that might not be famous outside or well-known outside of Bloomington. So Don's skills as a writer and interviewer were balanced by my skills in layout design and editing, and the result is the three albums we present to the Bloomington community today. And here are some examples of the album pages.
Here are the samples. The first one on your left is Arnie Johnson. He founded the Bloomington Athletic Association, and he had a philosophy that no matter what the abilities of the kids, they would play on a team. Later, he founded the Born Again Jocks for men over 55, who would then exercise. To the right is Fran Heitzman, who, Heitzman, that is, founded Bridging. He said, "We can create bridges between those who have and those who have not." So interesting, since 1987, Bridging inspected more, impacted more than 100,000 households and 300,000 individuals. Next is Hubert Olson, came to Bloomington in 1943, when there was one school, 600 students and 22 teachers. When he died of a heart attack, he supervised 21 new school buildings. Two schools are named after, Olson Elementary and Olson Middle School. All right, and the next one is Arnold Frencho, involved in starting the first volunteer fire department. The charter members of the fire department elected him the first chief of the volunteers, and he was active in Bloomington six years on the town council. The next one is Peter Doctor. He grew up in Bloomington. He won three Academy Awards for Best Animated Features, and he helped produce Toy Store, Toy Story, Toy Story 2, and A Bug's Life for Walt Disney Company. Quite a record. Next one is Mary Grandprey, who was nominated by Jean. He was a graduate of Minneapolis College of Art and Design. He illustrated used editions, US editions of the Harry Potter books, now living in Florida. Our next one on arts and entertainment you'll recognize is Earl Benson. Directed an award-winning Jefferson High School band for 26 years, founded the Medalists and directed the concert band for 36 years. He had a major, he had a real interesting band. That band, those bands, rather, played for three presidents in three Tournament of Roses parades. Frances Burns, I know her well, because when I came to Bloomington in 1963, she was my reporter. She covered community news for 36 years, co-founded with Paul Doc Evans, the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra, and was, and was largely responsible for keeping the mounds, Indian mounds, going in Bloomington. Our next person is Kathleen Blatts, so interesting. Grew up in Bloomington, 27 years a legislator and Supreme Court Justice. 1996, she was appointed a Supreme Court Justice by Arnie, Governor Arnie Carlson. Two years later, she was appointed the first female chief justice, and she served for eight years. Ray Pleasant, first American on the city council from 19, first African-American on the city council, 1965 to 1973. He was the second black American elected to the Minnesota Legislature. Now we come to the professional athletes, Tony Oliva, just named into the Baseball Hall of Fame. He played baseball for 15 years for the Minnesota Twins. He was named the 1964 Rookie of the Year. He was voted an All-Star Rookie of the Year, and he was voted an All-Star for seven more years. The next person you're, on your left, Milt Sunday, 11 seasons with the Minnesota Vikings, played in 113 games. He had 11 postseasons, two Super Bowls. Milt Sunday. The next one you'll recognize is a Kennedy High School graduate, Kent Herbeck. Played first base for the Minnesota Twins for nearly 14 years. He hit 233 home runs, batting over those years, 282. Played on two World Series teams, Kent Herbeck. The next person we have here is Tom Gray. Grew up in, in Bloomington. He was a talented speed skater. His best event was the 500-meter sprint. He competed in the 1964 and 1968 Olympic Games. The next one up is the Morgan Brothers. John Morgan, a 1981 state champion, Kennedy High School, four-time All-American wrestler at North Dakota University. He competed in Greco-Roman wrestling in 1988 Olympics, finishing seventh. The other Morgan brother is Gordy Morgan. He was a state champion wrestler at Kennedy in 1985. He competed nationally and internationally in the 1996 Olympics, and he was inducted into the Hall of Fame by the Minnesota Wrestling Coaches Association. And now you can see, Bloomington is the hometown of at least 14 professional hockey players. Four of them also played in the Olympics. The four that are on your screen are Eric Johnson, he played for the Colorado Avalanche; Ryan Stoa competed in the 2018 Winter Olympics; Zach Peristi played for the Minnesota Wild and went to school here; Mark Parrish played over 700 games in the National Hockey League. And now I'll turn to Jean.
The heroism of Tom Burnett Jr. led us to include other Bloomington residents who died in service to our country. 13 young men died in Vietnam and one in Iraq. The two we highlight for you today are Kenneth Paul and Ron Teshendorf. Just 18 years old, Kenny Paul is the youngest Bloomington resident to be killed in Vietnam. He had only been there three months, when he was killed by an accidental explosion in camp. Sergeant Ronnie Teshendorf was a popular hockey player at Lincoln High School, and he served a year in Vietnam and was flying home when his plane crashed into a mountainside in bad weather. He was 21 years old. We're pleased to present the results of this year-long project to the citizens of Bloomington. The notable albums will be a living document. Additional nominees will be added over time by the Historical Society researchers. The albums will be available to the public at any time the Bloomington Old Town Hall Museum is open and by appointment. It is our hope that having these stories available to the public will inspire pride in our community and encourage people to reach their full potential through the example of these notable Bloomington residents.
Well, any questions?
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you for the work. That's a lot of work that you put in. I appreciate that and understand it, and really do appreciate the work that went into this, and not just the work, but the obvious love and care that went into it also. So thank you for that, and thank you for, for your, your service to this community and doing this kind of thing, documenting this in this way. It, it's wonderful, thanks. Council, any questions on this? We had a preview of this, I think, at one of our, our listening sessions, and I think everyone was very excited to see the finished products, and I know we all are. I'd like, I'm looking forward to stopping by.
We'll have the books outside afterwards if people want to see them, and we do have a list of the 100 names on a, at the, of the table there, so.
Very good, very good. Council, any questions? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, mayor. Fantastic work and really, really inspiring and uplifting, and things like this, we kind of need more, now more than ever. And I guess I just want to say, I was reviewing the council packet and actually on our drive back from a trip to Iowa, and so I was talking through some of the people on this list with my kids, and we actually were neighbors with Bunny Ozzy, and so she would be absolutely honored to have made this list. And it just makes me wonder, are you planning on maybe working in partnership with the schools to share these, the names of these individuals or the information that you've collected, just so we can continue to, you know?
That is a possibility, particularly for the students who are studying history. You know, we could bring the books, you know, to their classroom and, or they should turn them over to the library. You know, we could bring the books, you know, to their classroom and, or they should tour the.
There you go.
We would be happy to collaborate with teachers who are interested, yes.
Well, my kids definitely found it interesting, so.
I think one thing I just want to quit, end with, this is a positive project about positive people in Bloomington. And at a time when there's division, I like this project because there is no question about what the politics were. We just wrote. So thank you very much. And we'll be outside with the books if anyone wants to see them and answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 2.4, and if anybody wants to jump out and look at the books, I certainly understand. I won't hold, I won't blame you at all. Item 2.4 is a presentation on the results of our 2022 Community Survey. Good evening, Diane. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I am delighted to bring forward the results from our 2022 National Community Survey of Bloomington residents. This is the 11th year in a row that we have collected information on how people are feeling about Bloomington services and programming. And so tonight, we're going to have the Director of Survey Research from the National Research Center at Polco, Jade Orocha, who is joining us from Boulder, Colorado, to present us with the survey results. So Jade, good to see you, and I'll turn it over to you now.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Good evening. Welcome.
To share the results of the 2022 Bloomington Community Survey with you. Let me go ahead and share my slides here. And can you all see that okay?
We can, indeed.
Okay. And before I dive into the results, I do just want to acknowledge both our longtime contact, Diane Kirby, for being such an invaluable part of the survey process. We've been working together for a long time with the city of Bloomington. She is always enormously helpful along each phase of the process. And I definitely also want to acknowledge my colleague Brandon Barnett, who was the project manager for this year's survey and who actually did the bulk of the work for this year's project. So a bit about who we are before I continue on. So National Research Center, I'll start there. Founded in 1994, we are one of the oldest survey companies in the country that has been conducting community surveys, standardized community surveys nationwide, and has one of the most robust benchmark databases in the country. We're best known for our benchmarking surveys such as the National Community Survey, the NCS, and also the National Business Survey, which Bloomington conducts with us also. And then Polco is a resident online digital engagement platform. NRC and Polco merged back in 2019. So now, in addition to the standardized community surveys that Bloomington has been conducting annually for a number of years now, we now also offer this additional outreach method to your residents as part of the services that are included with the cost for your annual contract with us. And then looking at the role of resident surveys in local governments, what do our clients move forward and use their results for? Most commonly, resident survey results are used to monitor trends over time when a survey has been conducted repeatedly, to measure ratings for government performance and public trust, to inform land use, budget, and strategic planning decisions, as well as resource allocation. We provide benchmarks to other communities. I'll talk about that in a bit more detail shortly because we do have a database of other communities across the country. And then finally, using the survey results to find focus areas in which to dig deeper. We highly suggest doing that rather than letting the survey be the end of your data collection. In true resident opinion, we like to think of it as more of a starting point in identifying areas of focus. So some background about the National Community Survey. This is our flagship community survey, and it is focused around a number of years of research into community livability. From that research, we have identified 10 facets which tie most closely to what residents identify as being key drivers for their satisfaction in the communities in which they live. These key facets also tend to dovetail nicely with city departments. And this is how the report is structured, is by each of these topic areas. So it makes it easier to find specific pieces of information that you are looking for as you review the report. I will cover the methods for the survey before we go into the actual results. So this was the 11th time that Bloomington has conducted the NCS of previous surveys annually from 2012 up to 2021. The survey this year was conducted, the data collection was conducted from May 20th to July 8th. And we employed a mailing approach in which 4,500 households were sampled. We received a total of 728 total responses from those 4,500 for an overall response rate of 17%. In order to calculate that response rate, we do remove the number of undeliverable of mailings that were addressed to vacant households in order to calculate that response rate. I will go into a bit more detail on how those mailings are conducted on the next slide. In addition to what we call this random sample portion of the survey, there was also an online-only, non-probability, open participation survey conducted. We received 55 responses to that survey. This is an opportunity for all residents of Bloomington to participate in the survey, not just those who received the invitation in the mail. Those results are reported separately in the report. The majority of the report, it contains results just from that random selection of 728 responses. Finally, the results were statistically weighted to ensure representativeness of Bloomington residents. We use American Community Survey and Census data to perform that statistical weighting. It is a essential part of gold standard survey research to conduct that statistical weighting. With 728 total responses, that gives us a margin of error of plus or minus 4% for this year's results. Looking a bit more into how the mailings were conducted, so as I noted, the 4,500 households. So each household received first a postcard. All of these materials were printed. The instructions were printed in both English and Spanish. So they first received a postcard with a web link instructing them to go online to fill out the community survey, and that also that they could wait a few days if they preferred for the survey to arrive in the mail. About a week later, each household received a paper survey in the mail as well as a postage pay return envelope for them to return that to our data entry team. And these mailings as well, the cover letter for the paper survey also contained a web link. So folks opening that envelope could opt to either complete it online or the paper version. Moving on to our benchmark database, we have about 500 communities currently in this database, and this is communities that have surveyed within the last five years. So the benchmark averages are sort of a rolling five-year average. They do change over time. We drop out older data as that data ages out, and then we are consistently adding new surveys to our database as we have new clients survey with us as well. And we also have the ability to provide custom benchmark comparisons to a subset of communities within this 500, which Bloomington also has elected to, as an add-on for this year's survey. I'll cover that shortly. Okay, getting now into the survey results this year. So I mentioned before those 10 facets of community livability, and I wanted to call attention to, there's two questions on the survey that ask about these facets in a very broad sense. They ask, there's two questions because one of them asks about the quality of each of those facets of community livability. And then the second question is worded a bit differently, and it asks about the importance of each. And the reason why I'm showing these two is to show you how we populate this quality and importance matrix. This is also included in the report. And this is just one of many ways to interpret and evaluate your data as you review the report. But the quadrants that you see here, the one that we usually call your attention to is the one in the lower right-hand corner with a green star. Those are facets which are identified as being high in importance and low in quality. And as you can see, that quadrant is blank for Bloomington, which just speaks to residents' overall satisfaction with, particularly with the facets of livability that they find most important. So that is notable. An overview of the national benchmarks now, so out of a total of 119 items for which we could provide benchmark comparisons. 103 of these were similar to the national benchmarks, and when I say similar, that means within 10 points of the national average. 15 were higher, and then only one was lower. I'll go into more detail on the benchmark comparisons as we go through the rest of the results, but just a couple of examples of those that were higher. Drinking water, Bloomington is a place to work, a variety of business and service establishments, shopping opportunities. And then the one item that was lower was expected economic impact on family income over the next six months. As I mentioned before, Bloomington also elected to compare their results to a subset of communities from within our database, and this subset was chosen by city staff for having the other communities in this comparative set were chosen for having characteristics similar to Bloomington. So of those 119 items for which we could provide comparisons, 116 were similar to or higher than the local, the peer community average, and that was, those two were drinking water, it's no removal. And then one received more negative ratings, and that again was the expected economic impact on family income. And finally, comparisons to 2021, and I am going to spend just a moment here to dig into this. We did see a notable number of declines from the previous survey year. So as you can see, out of the items for which trends were available, 69 were similar to the previous year's survey ratings, 0 were more positive, and 50 were more negative. On the surface, this does appear to be broadly not great news. I do want to point out some things that are important context for this, however. First of all, the margin of error, the by-year margin of error, as we refer to it, across survey years is only 5%. So anything higher than 5% to 6% or more in either direction is considered statistically significant. So with that in mind, I do want to point out that of the 50 items that decreased since the previous survey, 24 of those saw changes between 6% and 7%. Another 16 saw changes between 8% and 10%, and only 10 items on the survey declined by more than 10% over time. So just important context again to keep in mind as you evaluate decreases over time. We'll get now into the key findings for the survey. And our first key finding is that Bloomington's economy is strong, but poses challenges to community affordability. So we will start with the bright spots first. There were a number of those within the facet of economy. These ratings tended to be strong. Many were higher than the national averages. As you can see off to the right, anything that has that higher text that's in blue that is higher than the national benchmark comparisons. And you can see the long-term trend lines too, going back to, all the way back to 2016 here. There are full trends going all the way back to 2012 available in a different section of the report. But generally, we saw about 8 in 10 residents give positive ratings to the city as a place to work. Overall quality of business and service establishment, shopping opportunities in Bloomington as a place to visit are positively rated by three-quarters of residents, and a variety of business and service establishments, and employment opportunities as well. 6 in 10 residents were pleased with the vibrancy of the shopping area, and that was similar to the national benchmark.
Say Jade, before you move on, could you move back one, please?
Yes.
So the text there says that 64% residents rated Bloomington's economic development as excellent or good. My math, looking at the pie chart there, excellent plus good is 76%. Is that, am I not reading this correctly?
You are. It's just two different, it's two different but very similarly worded items on the survey. So one of those items is overall economic health. And then in this, there's a whole separate question that asks us about city services, and within that city services question, we ask specifically about economic development. So that's the two different ratings.
My apologies, two different questions. Thank you for the clarification.
No, there's a lot of different data points on this survey, so good question. So many of the items for which we saw declines over time did tend to be within the facet of economy or related to affordability. So I did want to just highlight those, especially looking at longer-term decreases over time to give more context. So ratings vary, that do vary by item, as you can see here. But you can see the relative variability of certain aspects here. Future economic outlook, that's that gray line on the bottom, and you can see that one has the most variability, is most volatile, really, over time. And then going up from there, we see, you know, affordable quality of housing, which is black, cost of living, which is pink, affordable quality of mental health care, reduced, and also affordable quality of child care preschool. We see over the long haul, a gradual downward trend. And then for those in particular, we do see a bit more of a pronounced drop from 2021 to 2022. Important things to keep in mind here because often, you know, it's a really common question, why did our ratings decline year over year? The first thing that I will say is that survey researchers, we can, as a survey researcher, is we can tell you, a survey can tell you what your residents think, but not why they think it, which is why this survey is such an important starting point for digging deeper into the why. And we have the availability of the Polco platform to do that digging, and there's other opportunities to do that as well within the community. Other context that is important to keep in mind. So ratings that were relatively stable up until 2020 to 2021, and then dropped coinciding with the beginning of, in the middle, really, of the pandemic, and also more recently with increasing rates of inflation. So that's a fairly new topic that may be more front of mind for residents as they take the survey. This is a resident perception survey, so other things that are always going to impact results might be, for example, an increased media focus on rising cost of living or affordability in the area. There have been an uptick in news articles about that or about housing shortages as there have been elsewhere throughout the US, which can definitely have an impact on resident perception and therefore on their ratings. So I do, and finally, last point I want to make here is, even with these declines, these ratings all remain similar to both the national and the peer community benchmark comparisons. So still within, well within range of what we are seeing in other communities. Moving on to our second key finding, residents appreciate Bloomington's natural environment and recreational opportunities. This is also another bright spot for Bloomington's ratings. We see that nine in 10 residents gave positive ratings to air quality, and then about eight in 10 were pleased with water resources, preservation of natural areas, as well as Bloomington open space, and those three items received ratings that were higher than the national benchmark. About three-quarters were pleased with cleanliness and recycling. And then about looking at parks and recreation in Bloomington, about eight in 10 residents positively rated the availability of paths and walking trails, fitness opportunities, recreational opportunities, recreation programs or classes, and also city parks. They rated these as excellent or good. And all of these ratings also were similar to those seen in other communities. Key finding number three, overall governance ratings remain positive, but some public trust ratings have declined. So we can see here the overall proportion of those giving an excellent or good rating to each of these items related to government performance. Again, these ratings were all similar to national averages, even though we did see some declines year over year. I would say that, just again, for additional context, without cluttering up this particular slide with a bunch of numbers, the declines here ranged from 5% decrease in the overall direction that Bloomington has taken up to a 9% decrease for generally acting in the best interest of the community. So we didn't see any changes here that were, that were greater than 10% for the city, public, government performance ratings. Key finding number four, safety and related services continue to receive high ratings, contributing to residents' quality of life. contributing to residents' quality of life. So residents continue to feel very safe within the community. As you can see, virtually all residents reported feeling very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood during the day. And then about nine in 10 felt safe in the Bloomington's commercial area, as well as from natural disasters. About eight in 10 felt safe from violent crime and property crime. These ratings, again, all similar to the national averages. Looking at specifically safety-related services in Bloomington, many of these were also highly rated by a strong majority of residents, with those emerging at the top, fire services, ambulance and EMS, fire prevention and education. And then also between seven in 10 and eight in 10 gave positive ratings to police services, animal control, and crime prevention. All of these evaluations were also similar to national averages. It is virtually impossible to be above the national average rating for fire services. Everybody loves the fire department. So even with a very high rating, that is actually still within the national average range. Now looking more broadly at quality of, just broad quality of life ratings, these, this is the first set of questions on the survey. So this high level of safety is like, a likely contributor to the positive quality of life reported by residents. And as you can see, 90% of residents positively rated the city as a place to live and would recommend living in Bloomington to someone who asked. And then about eight in 10 or more positively rated the overall quality of life in the city and plan to remain in Bloomington for the next five years. And then three quarters were pleased with the city's overall image or reputation. These ratings did remain stable over time and were similar to national comparisons. There is a five-page survey, meant to mention that during the section on the mailed material. But it's an overall five-page survey with three and a half pages of standardized questions and a full page of demographic questions so that we can perform that statistical weighting. There's an additional half, additional half page available for unique questions to Bloomington. We don't have benchmark comparisons available for these since they are unique. But this, these were the custom questions on this year's survey. Let's look at those one by one. First question just asked residents how interested they were in receiving city communications via the following social networks. And we can see a strong preference for Facebook, YouTube, and Nextdoor, followed by, in decreasing order, Instagram, Twitter, Snapchat, and TikTok. And what that being the least preferred modes of communication. Residents were asked how much of a source they considered a list of sources to be for obtaining information about the city of Bloomington and its activities. 93% of residents indicated they use the City of Bloomington newsletter as a major or minor source of information, and 85% use the city website. About eight, six in 10, roughly six in 10, use the Bloomington Sun Current, social media, any social media, and then the Star Tribune. And then the least utilized sources of information were the email subscription service, e-subscribe, BTV cable channel, and then the online version of the Bloomington Sun Current. So that is on here twice. The paper version is utilized more so than the online version. Whenever this question is asked, this is a pretty commonly added custom questions, custom question for our clients. It's really important to note that even though you might have less engagement or interaction with certain information sources, different types of residents interact with each of these. And so we are always highly encouraging our clients to, if you've got important information, to get out into the community, to use as many, any and all avenues of communication as possible. And different folks consume information in different, via different channels. Then another question asked about social media usage compared to one year ago. About half said that they used social media about the same amount. About two in 10 reported using it more or much more. And then six, 10% said they use it less, 6% much less. And then two and, about two in 10 said they don't use social media at all. And finally, looking at a question asking about COVID-19 challenges. Residents were asked to rate how much of a problem each of these was on their house, for their household currently. There have been different COVID-related questions asked since the beginning of the pandemic. So we've shifted from, to asking about impact, current impacts. By far, the most, the item rated as the largest problem by residents was the impact of inflation on household finances currently. That's at 65% of residents rating this as a major or moderate problem. Roughly one quarter noted the loss of income from retirement savings, lack of paid sick leave or time off benefits from their employer, and then loss of employment income. Only 7% reported loss of housing as a major or moderate problem. That is a recap of the key findings that we found through our interpretation of the data. I do want to point out again, there are a very large number of data points in this survey. So these are what stood out to us as survey research. Highly encourage you to take a closer look at the report and identify other additional key findings as well. And then before I open it up for questions, I do just want to, I've already said it, the Polco platform continues to be available to you to do further outreach with your residents. Bloomington currently has, these are just screenshots of what the interface of Polco platform looks like. City of Bloomington currently has 3,886 subscribers. That means that those folks will receive, it's optional for you to do this, but email notifications if you do post new content to your profile. So it's a really great way to do follow-up engagement with your residents. I'm happy to take questions.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the thorough presentation and the 11 years that we've been doing this. We appreciate the, the information is always very valuable, so thank you for that. Also questions, I see Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just wondering, could you clarify, so on page four of the binder packet thing that we got, there's a section on analyzing the data. And can you explain the unweighted, weighted, and target? So for example, there's age 55 plus, the unweighted is 73%, the weighted is 42%, and the target is 42%. So what does that mean?
So when we wait, and let me go ahead and I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I'm happy to share it again if needed, but that way I can actually get to that page to look at the report and the page that you were referencing. Okay, so. So we are on the, in the about section, sorry.
Yes, it says weights were calculated using an iterative multiplicative raking model known as the ANES weighting algorithm.
Yes.
So I guess, yeah, if you could explain that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to have the actual numbers in front of me while I spoke about weighting. So we do use SPSF, and sometimes we use R. These are statistical software programs. Raking is, is another word for weighting. But what weighting does is it makes adjustments based on self-reported demographics of the respondents in order to, and this is just, again, it's a survey industry best practice. But what that does is it performs adjustments on the data. So that, a really common example, back up a little bit. The reason why weighting is a survey industry best practice is because we hear from certain demographics and certain characteristics of residents, we hear from them more or less than others. So hard-to-reach residents are what we call these folks, and they tend to be people who are younger, people who are not white, people who live in detached, in attached housing or rent their homes. Men tend to respond to surveys at a slightly lower rate than women. So these are all factors that would, that cause what you're seeing here in the unweighted column. That is who we actually heard from in the respondents. And this is pretty typical, particularly that 18 to 34 age bracket, looking at that as an example. And then the target is the norm that we have established from the most recent census or American Community Survey data available to us for the city of Bloomington. So we, SPSF has this raking model that is part of the software that makes statistical adjustments to give slightly more weight to the underrepresented voices that we hear from.
Okay, so for Bloomington, the people who actually responded, about 73% of the people were over 55. But then you used the statistical weighting to kind of get to that 42% target. And is there a point at which, like, you just can't, like, it doesn't work? Like, if you don't hear from anybody who is 18 to 34, African-American, who's a renter, like, how does that work?
Um, great question. Sure, so it's rare, so that's why we, we aim for a minimum number of responses in any given community with, to ensure that that sort of discrepancy doesn't happen where we're not here, that we don't have any responses at all. Some certain subgroups of folks, was not the case in Bloomington. We do limit, however. We will not, what we call overcorrect the data. So if, you know, using your example, if, or a similar example, you know, if we only heard from three young African-American men, we are not going to weight their responses to such an extent to get all the way to the population norm. It will correct partially. But our, we are interested in what's called the best fit. And that is what the raking model in SPSF is designed to do, is to find the best fit. Not just within one variable, one characteristic, but across all of them. It's evaluating each of those for each respondent. You know, housing status, gender, age, all of those things are being factored in for each person, and they are assigned a weight. Typical weights, I mean, this, it may sound a little bit more dramatic than it actually is. We do the actual weight. So if you consider any given resident to have at the start a weight of one, then one person equals a weight of one. Most weights tend to be somewhere between, you know, you might see a weight of .80 for someone, or a weight of point, of 1.2. So it's making adjustments to the results. But we do have absolutely checks in place to make sure that we are not going too far. It just in order, in the name of checking the box to get all the way to the population norm. It is a balance.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I guess I just have one comment. And I just, I was kind of struck by, of course, the affordability ratings slide. But I was also struck by the fact that four of the seven things that were on that slide, so food, healthcare, childcare, and preschool, mental health care, are things outside of the city's direct control. And, but of course, that also just emphasizes or reiterates the importance of working in partnership with others. And, and as we think about policy priorities, how are those things showing up in, in our policy agenda? So just really appreciate having the data in front of us and, and for you taking the time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Lomond.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Carter. You actually hit, one of the questions I had was around the analyzing the data. Because when I saw 16% unweighted for the fourth district, that, that said, I said, wait a minute now, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So thank you for, you two clarifying that for me. So let me just jump to my questions. So, so when I look at this balancing performance and importance, number nine, I see here inclusivity and engagement. It's in the bottom left-hand corner. How am I supposed to look at that? Help me understand. If you could just be as short as possible, but be precise. I got a couple other questions here.
Sure. Let me navigate to that.
And while you're navigating to that, I will just say how much I appreciate seeing the, the survey results on safety. We really seem to be holding, holding steady on that.
Absolutely. So inclusivity and engagement, that one is right. So it did, we did see, the, the cut points that you see in this chart are the median ratings. So it's, it's literally just, it's not compared to other communities. It's just compared, not compared to the benchmarks, compared to, was it above or below the median quality and median importance rating?
So when I say importance, am I saying importance to residents or to the city? What, help me understand what that means.
Yes, there is, there are two questions on the survey asking residents to rate the quality of each of these, as well as the importance of each of these. And then it's cross-plottting them on this same chart. So for inclusivity and engagement, it looks like about, just shy of 70%, rated it as essential or very important. Whereas somewhere around 55% rated the quality of this facet as excellent or good.
Thank you, that helps me understand that a little bit better. So then.
Councilmember, if I could, Jade, could you, when you, when you're referring to a slide, if you, it would be helpful, I think, if you could share your screen. Could you do that? That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm actually on the report now here too, just to clarify. This is, we're on the Polco platform looking at the report now. Let me go ahead and share it.
So then that leads me to my next question around some of the, the, if you, as you try to parse the information in terms of demographics and district-level areas. Is that still available to, to look at in, in this report? Or is that online, or can we look?
It is. So this is on the actual, on your Polco profile. However, this report has been generated in Tableau Public. So there's also just a link that can be shared and that you can more easily access. I just, this is the fastest way for me to get to this for screen sharing purposes. But, so if you click, you see the tabs here that I'm kind of quickly scrolling across. And this will look very similar in the Tableau Public report. Just splits up all the different sections of the report. But comparisons is what you were referring to. And then also called cross-tabulation.
Yeah.
So yes, that is still here. And you, it's a little bit tricky because you do have to select the demographic that you'd like to look at cross-section the data by. But say let's pick area here. You can still see those comparisons by, in this case, area, but also age, gender, et cetera. There's also statistical significance to factor in here as well, that it is on a separate tab. So it's important to keep that in mind. For example, with income, that is a variable that you can look at to, to evaluate the differences in, in results. But it's important not to not overinterpret differences and just to keep that in mind. Like ballpark, you would want to see, you know, this varies category by category, as you can see. But somewhere between 10 and 13% difference, more than that would be statistically significant difference in ratings, or income specifically. And same thing here, there's a dropdown menu and you can select each variable and look at the statistical significance threshold.
Well, that's very useful, thank you. And then just one other question for you, and then just a couple more comments, and then we'll move on. So when I looked in the governance area, I looked at transparency. It dropped from 66%, this is on page 12, down to 59%. And then there was another one that went from 68% to 60. And I'll try to see what that question was here exactly. And I just wanted to clarify that in terms of, you know, if those questions are asked, you know, how do we rate what our, our peers with that? Just trying to have an understanding of what that means, what the definition of that is.
So the, the interpretation of the question wording for these items, you mean?
Well, yeah, I mean, so it says being open and transparent to the public. We went from, looks like 66% last year down to 59%. So that's that, that drop you talked about, more than, more than 5%. Help me understand. I think the next one is informing residents about issues facing the community, 68% down to 60. I'm just trying to, you know, trying to understand that in the context. Is there something going on? Is there something from a trend? I'm just trying to understand what that, what that means.
Sure. And it's a great question. And this is a, exactly the type of thing we would suggest as a, a area to dig deeper in. Because with just this survey and no further digging, it's, it's hard for us to answer that question. Asking an open-ended question on the platform or putting questions like that out to residents where they can write in their own words. Those questions are, are more time-intensive because, you know, you do have, it's not as, it's more qualitative than quantitative. It's still really useful to gain more specific insight into why residents might be having a change of heart or a change of opinion in ratings. So for follow-up, that is something, an easy first step is, you know, sort of posting a short question set, asking them to rate these items, and then asking for the reasons for why they rate it this way. Kind of the nice, and years ago, we used to suggest focus groups for this type of interaction with residents, which are costly and they are difficult to get people to attend. Now, with so much available at our fingertips with online engagement, it can be almost as valuable, if not just as valuable, as, as that in-person focus group. Because you can reach a much larger audience with your, for your subscribers already on your platform, as well as the rest of the community.
Thank you for that. I, I know that one time. Thank you for that. I I know that one time, um, several years back when we were doing this, um, we we found out that based on when we did the survey, that really drove uh some of those results. And that's why I was kind of hoping you'd say something with this here. And so I'm just curious, you know, um, so I would like us to look a little deeper into this one here, because I that that seems out of the norm. Uh, so I just wondered if there's something else that's driving that. So um, and I've got some other ones around transportation, um, uh, that I'd like to like to look at as well. Uh, but I think overall, uh, the very interesting results. I thank you for bringing this forward.
Mm-hmm. I do want to mention, too, in terms of digging deeper, we have an entire library of questions that are already ready to go in our library. Um, so we don't ask you all to reinvent the wheel. Um, and we have ongoing access to our platform and all of our library of questions that are available to you to to repost, as well as ongoing customer support from our team as well, to help identify, here are the things we want to ask about, what questions do you have that are related?
Council questions? So I have one for, and I I don't know if it's for you, Jade, as much as our staff, I think, because I don't know if you'd have the context. But we did a survey within the past few months as well, the Morris Leatherman survey, that we heard about last month, and the results were strikingly different than what we're hearing here. And I'm wondering if we have a little context, a little information, or or just some ideas as to why they might be as different as they are. And I don't know, Mr. Sable, or Diane, or?
And actually, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I did have a conversation, had an opportunity to talk to Jade about that, and I'm I'm going to hand it off to her. Um, she has some context that may prove useful on this one.
She does, okay.
Yeah, I I I did get briefed ahead of time, and I really appreciate the question, because it's a valid, it's a valid question. Why would we ask very similar questions that get such different results? Um, and um, just broadly, knowing, um, you know, what Morris Leatherman's, their methods are different from ours. They primarily conduct phone surveys, um, which definitely have um their own usefulness, time and place. They are faster to conduct than the mail survey. So, uh, but one thing that is what is pretty well-known in the survey research industry is that um, residents will, it's called positive response bias, and it's not just phone, it's any in-person interviewer. Um, it's, our people are more likely to give a positive response when they are speaking to a human than if they are completing an anonymous web survey or filling out a paper survey without the person asking them the question. Um, we see this, uh, the effect does vary. There's um a few articles that kind of enumerate it. Um, but so it is something that to be taken into account. I guess my short answer would be, um, if it's a phone survey, and ours is a mail-based survey, I would have been surprised, we would have been surprised, the survey researchers, researchers, if the results weren't different. We would expect a phone survey to have more positive results, um, just because of that. And I could not, could there be other factors? Could it be that a little bit of time has elapsed, people's opinions have changed a little bit? Sure, there's not really a good way for us to be able to measure that or quantify that, but we do know about the response effects of different modes of surveying. So um, hopefully that is helpful.
And it is helpful. The, so the difference between in-person or talking to a person versus a paper survey, which has been found to be more accurate?
In terms of accuracy, uh, and it's why we have stuck with the the mail-based approach for as many years as we have, and then, you know, branching into online, we have found that uh mail-based random sample, and that the random, the randomization is also important of your residence is tends to be uh more accurate. Um, and it's hard to say, because it's, again, it's not really a matter of, it's, one is more positive than the other. So as long as you are taking that into account when you are evaluating those ratings, um, that's that's the important piece. I will say that we have, in our database, um, there are, um, not so much anymore, but there, we used to have a good number of phone-based surveys. And so we actually do adjustments to those data, knowing that those data are more positive. And then when we've had clients transition over to us, and their previous survey vendor was was using phone methods, um, invariably, when they switch to a mail-based survey, their ratings go down, um, in almost every case. So it's just a, it's a known effect. Um, as far as accuracy, um, yeah, we we feel more confident, even though the ratings appear to be lower, we do feel more confident in the um, the honesty of the respondent when they are giving their responses, when they feel truly anonymous, and they're not trying to produce a socially desirable uh result from their interviewer.
Thank you. Mr. Sable, anything, something to add?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. The only thing I was going to add was sort of the dates of the surveys, because whether these were, these two were done. Um, so the Polco survey was in the field from May twentieth to about June thirtieth, so about a seven-week period. The um Morris Leatherman survey was July twenty-seventh through August eleventh. So different months, compressed timeframe. I think the other thing I'll just mention is that the um, the phone survey is able to sort of distinguish where households are. So the, um, for example, Ward Four had twenty-two percent respondents in the Morris, in the phone survey, and sixteen percent in the Polco survey. So it's weighted even differently based on geography. So there's some, uh, for the survey research junkies out there, there's a lot of raw data that can be extrapolated. But I think those are some of the things. And I think the other one that I'll note is the renter mix in the phone survey was twenty-nine percent renters, and in the mail-in survey was sixteen percent. So those things can shape the responses. But so date, mix, and then um speed, I think, are the three sort of big factors that may have played a role in some of the different numbers.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for you about um the national benchmark. I know we had one slide in our packet around the comparison communities, but I think you also mentioned in your presentation that staff made some specific suggestions or or selections. Can you describe a little bit more what your national benchmark includes? Um, are they comparative, based on population, based on age, based on whatever? And then could you share a little bit more about um the selections that staff made, and what the difference between those two populations is? Thanks.
Sure. Well, the the national, I'll start with the national one, and I'm going to um look up the information that you're asking for on the custom subset here. But the national database is just simply everyone um that has um surveyed with us, or in some cases, um, some of the surveys in our database are actually not conducted by us, but it's other vendors that have asked similar questions on their surveys, and for which we have data that we can pull in. Uh, that's all within the last five years. There's no constraints on size of community, location of community, that's everyone. So the national comparisons are just included as part of the NCS package, the basic NCS package for all clients. Um, an add-on is, an add-on, um, optional add-on service is that custom subset of benchmark comparisons. Um, and those are typically determined by using, most commonly, population size, region, median household income, or some combination of all of those things. Um, sometimes also our clients, what we call hand-pick, um, from a list. So they'll start with a pretty good best-fit list of communities that, you know, these are geographically close to you, and they are relatively similar size and relatively similar income. And then they'll evaluate the list and say, okay, we want all forty of these, but take out these five, because they're too different from us. So we really do leave it um up to our our clients to make those decisions. Um, as long as they're, you know, as long as they're in our database, they are allowed to choose them as a as a comparison community.
And I will say, Councilmember, we did handpick this, I think, eleven years ago when we did start this. And as as was stated, it was similar-sized communities, uh, communities that are suburban in nature, and might have a similar residential to to business, to industrial mix, uh, and and some communities in in the state of Minnesota as well, trying to just put a decent benchmark, trying to look at what we call of our, you know, call our peer communities, as opposed to the broad national survey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How how many peer groups, uh, communities make up that num, the custom number versus the five hundred that make up the?
Ms. Kirby, can you help me with that one? I'm not even, I don't recall. Or you do? Okay.
There are nineteen in the list of, which is a fairly, fairly small curated list. We tend to see when, with other clients, but it's, but it's really up, again, to our clients' decision. So sometimes it's twenty, sometimes it's thirty, sometimes it's a hundred, better in that sub-comparison. But for Bloomington, for this year, there are nineteen communities in the list.
Okay, just one final question. Then that comparison is the twenty-twenty-one slide. Um, those are, those are our own numbers compared to twenty-twenty-one. Is there a benchmark from those communities, either at the national level or at the custom level, that says we are above or below the baseline in terms of the decline? I mean, I could see that, I can see them on an individual basis when I look at them, but I didn't see them in the aggregate. And so as I sum up, I'm kind of curious if this, if you're presenting a slide a lot like this to everybody else in that list, which the data suggests would be true.
So I would, we don't have a a time-based benchmark. Um, although, I mean, I wish that we could provide that. One of the reasons we can provide benchmarks is it is, again, a rolling five-year average. There would, particularly around COVID, many of our clients put pause on their surveys for at least twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So if we were looking simply at um comparing changes over time by jurisdictions, because you're right on that slide, and I can pull that back up, so we're all um on the same page here. Um, we don't currently provide that, just because the the difference in some of our clients survey annually, some survey every three years, some survey um every two years. That's actually most common, is every two years for the same survey. Um, so it wouldn't necessarily be an apples-to-apples comparison. Um, and then there would be far fewer to be able to to compare to, because we have far fewer communities to survey in in a, in any given twelve months than we do in a five-year period, if that makes sense. Um, but I think, you know, more broadly, to speak to, write again, um, you know, are we seeing broadly declines in some areas with our other clients? Um, this I can speak to sort of anecdotally, because I do present quite a bit, and so I do a lot of this. And I would say, anecdotally, um, what I've been telling quite a lot of our clients, particularly that are suburbs and metro areas that have had, say, high-profile faces in the news, related to particularly around safety, um, or it could be, um, as I mentioned earlier, housing shortages or affordability. Um, those do seem to have an impact on resident perception. Again, without digging deeper and specifically asking, it's difficult for us to make the further jump and to hypothesize as to the why. Um, but it really does vary by community. Um, some of our, some of our clients, we've seen their trend over time remain pretty stable. Um, and then some we've seen some declines, others we've seen some modest increases. It just, it it does really vary, and I can't, I don't think I can generalize more than that, unfortunately.
No, that's okay. I appreciate the opportunity. What I'm getting to, Mr. Mayor, is that if you look at the two slides prior, right, where you see a hundred and three similar ratings and a hundred and sixteen similar ratings, then the implication of that is that all of those, if were similar that much, then all the other ones went down, too. But I didn't want to just make that assumption without, if we could look at actual data. So that that was the the leap of logic I was taking there, if that makes sense.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, that does make sense. I would just, I would highlight, too, that um, because some, so many of the ratings drops we saw for Bloomington this year were pretty minor, it's still, you still stayed within. Um, so, you know, one thing that we didn't do for this slideshow is compare how many were above the benchmark last year versus similar this year. So that is an additional thing that we could look at in terms of, you know, were, was this mix different last year than it is this year? Um, but again, the the differences were slight enough so that very few, only one, was lower than both sets of benchmarks. Oh, and that is, I actually meant to speak to that a little bit more. I know that we've um talking a lot, but the the um impact on economic family, on family income, which is the one item that is lower than both national and peer benchmarks. I will say that we have seen a recent and and notable drop for virtually all communities that have surveyed recently. And again, anecdotally, um, we would hazard a guess that that is because inflation, rising inflation has been, um, you know, very much in the news, particularly in, within the last six, eight months. Um, so that does seem to have had a pretty pronounced impact in pretty much all of the communities that we have recently surveyed in for that item.
Council, anything further? Councilmember Lohman, your your comment earlier about the the timing reminded me what that was. Uh, if you recall, we came out of a survey with just terrible ratings for our quality of roads. And if you remember, they did the survey in April, right after a tough winter.
Yeah.
And it was, and I think there are others who remember that as well. And I think then it was a matter of kind of taking that in context and looking at what might the the reasons be. So it's interesting. I mean, it's a.
Thanks for reminding me of that, because I, because I was trying to think of what that was, because I remember that. And we we did, we did a phone survey after that, and it it ended up shifting some of that.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you. Uh, thank you, and to everyone at Polco who worked on this, because I know it's a, it's a team effort over there and and a big lift. But thank you much for the information and your presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. Um, have a wonderful evening. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, you, too. Thank you, Ms. Kirby, for directing this through once again this year. If you're just tuning in, we did make an adjustment to the agenda tonight, where we moved item five-point-five, uh, the update on artistry to the City Council. We moved that to this point in the City Council agenda. So we'll put that right ahead of our consent business, if that's okay with Councilmember Coulter. We're fine with that. So I will call item five-point-five now, which is an artistry update to the City Council. Uh, Mr. Sable's going to lead us off, but I know we'll be hearing from Mr. Mylan, the Artistry Board Chair. I see Mr. Gibbs there as well. Uh, I believe the acting executive director, I haven't seen Kelly Foster-Ward here yet, but uh, ah, she's, oh, she's going to be joining us virtually as well. So I'll turn this over to uh Mr. Sable to kick us off. Mr. Sable.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. I also want to, Jamie Verbrugge pops up on screen as if on cue. Um, this is, as folks know, the artistry discussion. Uh, there was a conversation, uh, several council meetings ago about the roles and responsibility um with the city with with regard to artistry and the financial challenges that they have. Uh, at that meeting, the Council approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for artistry. And as a condition of that grant, uh, they were asked to present a report to the City Council today on October seventeenth, outlining the actions they've taken to date, and then some business plan requests for the coming year. Uh, Artistry did provide a, an update and communicated that to the City Manager. Um, I'm going to stop there, because this is an opportunity for discussion, and maybe ask City Manager Verbrugge if he wants to add any more context other than what's in the packet.
And I can hear Mr. Verbrugge's head shake all the way from Arizona, so that's good. And so, Council, any questions as we we move into our discussion here? Miss, Councilmember Lohman?
So just so I'm clear, uh, this evening, are we going to be asked to uh make a decision about something? Uh, and if there is a decision, what is that decision that we are going to be asked to make tonight?
I believe Councilmember Lohman, that's part of the the discussion and then in the presentation we're be, going to be getting this evening. So please, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And up here at the podium with me is Shelley Peterson, the new treasurer of our of our Artistry Board. Uh, Pat Mylan, who you mentioned, is our chair. He's in the room, as is our vice chair, Mary Prentnix, and several other board members. Uh, Annette Lee is here, Karen Nordstrom is here, and we've got Kelly, I see her now. Hi, Kelly. So you met Kelly last um month. Uh, Kelly Warder is our new interim and fantastic uh executive director, and rounding out our new leadership team at Artistry, Ben Bachan in the back, maybe wave Ben, and Allison Richard. And so this is a new leadership team in Artistry, all of them new in the last month. So uh, the duty here is first to provide an update and and suggest a couple of other thoughts moving forward. So the update is that, thank you very much, we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that the mayor referenced, and that's allowed us to make payroll and pay some past invoices due to artists, and to set up payment plans for select past-due vendors. Since last month, we've also adjusted the staffing at Artistry. So we now have eleven full-time equivalents contrasted with fifteen. Um, we hosted a successful fundraiser. Some of you were there here in this building back on October seventh, and I'm pleased to report that raised forty thousand dollars. Uh, we strengthened our bylaws. We have amended the bylaws of the Artistry Board and organization, and created an audit committee. We hired an audit firm, C-Biz, which is a specialist in nonprofit corporations. Some of you may be familiar with C-Biz. We have started the fall art classes on schedule. We have started the fall art classes on schedule, both at the Center for the Arts as well as throughout the community. We've advanced the visual arts programming that was anticipated, and so actually last Friday started the jury art exhibition here in the gallery in the building. We've ramped up the promotion for and ticket sales for the holiday show Bing, and initial results are encouraging. And we created the initial outline for a development exercise and began executing. We don't want to pretend that that development plan is fully in order, but some of the architecture of it is, is well in hand, and so we've actually had or scheduled six corporate meetings since the last meeting with you, pursued additional arts grants, both with the Minnesota State Arts Board as well as the Minnesota Humanities Center, and we've begun the process of some additional arts philanthropic grant work that we had not pursued in past years. Simultaneously, we're continuing the forensics. We really feel like we've got a pretty good handle, and we're so appreciative of Allison and Ben joining along with Kelly to really, you know, get under the tires on this thing beyond that board-level review and exercise that you would anticipate, but really the staff level. And, and deep, we appreciate that. We've picked up a lot of feedback over the last month from several of you, from longtime community members and some experts who haven't necessarily been involved with this organization but have been involved with similar organizations. And we met with the city staff a couple of different times, and we do come to you with a revised proposal. It was referenced what, what had been discussed previously. We have a revised proposal, and that is a $750,000 repayable loan rather than that $350,000 forgivable loan that we discussed last month. That was essentially a taxpayer infusion into artistry and still left us with a very large nut to raise quickly from other sources. And frankly, that plan didn't stand the test of time or broader input. But this plan that we suggest this evening is a $750,000 true loan, and when you combine that with the $150,000 grant of a month ago, along with the approximately $100,000 in recent private donations and grants and what's anticipated in the near term. And I just want to stop here and say, this community's been very generous. We went to a lot of the traditional donors when we first identified this crisis a few months ago, and then again here over the last month. And some, you know, you don't want to start naming names, but I just think about Debbie and Alan Schneider, and just so many that have been there in the past and they're with us again right now. And it is very inspiring to the rest of us, but when you, when you combine those three elements, we get to that million-dollar amount that we estimated is necessary to really clear the way for executing a plan still to be finalized, but to assure a successful and sustainable operation. So that's the thinking on the amount, and it does provide us seven months or so, you know, sort of building on what's the rationale, seven months or so of operating, well, this is about $100,000 a month operation at this point, when you look at what our ongoing expenses are, plus the payment plans we've been working out and the like. So this would allow us seven months to really create that organizational stability we think we need to move out of crisis mode and begin building a contributed revenue plan, embark on a serious strategic planning process and do the internal audit of the programs and systems that's required, you know, to be responsible to suggest we won't be back here. It enables the retention, we think, it enables the retention of a development professional that's been missing, and, you know, we can't sustain an organization like this at this level without more professional expertise and that can sustain. It enables capacity for a realistic evaluation process of our programming and, and to make adjustments during this, even this upcoming season, should allow us to plan for the next season, which is already beginning, and the summer program. And this should give us that runway we need for success. We do think it signals to the funding community as well, and artists and donors, and, and the right sort of signal that those investments are secure. Timing? I've got to tell you, realistically, we need a significant amount of this money this month. So we're, we're asking that you really consider this in, in, in real time and not this evening. We're not asking for a vote. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman heard that, you know, but we really would love to have the discussion tonight that paves the way for action this month by the council. We have prepared a draft loan agreement, draft note, we've exchanged with staff, term sheets along the lines of the discussions have been, you know, undertaken previously. One question came up informally just a little bit ago about the reports that we might envision. So this is the report that was requested and agreed to a month ago, but we would envision, and we've got a sort of term sheet laid out that would envision another report next month, suggesting November 14th, that would be an update on the management plan. I've given you some of that already because we stepped in, into, you know, fast-track mode, but we, we will really provide an updated management plan and, and audited financial statements next month, November 14th, under this proposal. And then monthly thereafter, we would provide the city financial reports. Our thinking is that December 31st of this year, we would submit a built-out development plan, and I appreciate that we had exchanged some documents with staff that Mayor may not have been shared with you that suggested a development plan would, would be shared by the end of 2023. But on reflection, the elements of a development plan are so underway right now, you really do deserve that from us by the end of this year. But you deserve something much more, we think, by the end of next year, and that is a serious five-year overall business plan. So we envision, at the end of this year, submitting our development plan, and then the end of next year, after we've completed that strategic planning process, built out a business plan, get that in front of you for observation before the end of next year, but not precipitously, not so early that it's not something that any of us would stand tall with. And annually thereafter, in other words, starting in 2023, we would envision providing a return on investment report reflecting activities of the prior year and, and sources of revenue, sources of expenditure, and, and how we doing relative to the broader mission. And so we're calling that, and it's a term that's been used here previously, a return on investment report. So I think I might yield unless Shelley, Shelley's from BMO Bank, she, that's her day job, but I think that she's been working full-time for Artistry as our board treasurer for the last six weeks, and I, I can't be more appreciative. So between the two of us, we think we either can answer some questions, give you some feedback, or look behind us and find someone who can here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and for the report. Council, questions? Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the information you've shared here. It's, it's obviously you've moved very, very quickly to kind of keep things on the right track. A couple of questions. So of the, I think it was page four of the artistry update that you shared, of the 750,000 requested, some of it was allocated to settling past accounts?
Yes.
Just wondering, is that stuff that's come to light since we discussed the emergency grant or?
The vast majority of that, we, we've been discovering over months.
Well, actually, we've discovered, I would say, by the time that we received the grant, we had identified all of the outstanding past-due debts.
Okay.
But it took a while between September 7th and September 26th to identify a couple of additional surprises.
Okay. And just one more quick question. So you had mentioned kind of roughly this would be about a seven-month float ideally, assuming this were to come through and be dispersed pretty quickly. It was noted in the, the document that obviously part of the issue was attendance plummeted, which makes sense. I guess how fast would attendance need to recover at the shows to be able to float operations at the end of seven months?
Right, and I don't know how Kelly's technology is working, but it's a combination of people in the seats as well as the expense associated with the productions. So Kelly has, has moved in and, and others previously really took a look at, okay, what's a manageable payroll and the expense related to the shows? And Shelley might be able to go into that in some detail.
I just flashed this up, and I realize now that my technology just provided the whole world that information. So fortunately, I had it. The one thing that an arts organization needs to know and understand is that earned revenue is only going to get you maybe 50% of your total budget. So one of the things that I did is I, I conducted an exercise with outstanding inventory, ticket inventory, and assumed a 65% occupancy for every show, and then an 80% occupancy for every show, and determined per show what additional revenue lift we would get. So for example, Bing, if we got 65% of that auditorium full every show, that would be an additional $85,000 in revenue. And if it was 80%, $105,000 additional. So in the seven months that we're talking, we have Bing and Spelling Bee. And we'll just be starting to get into Pajama Game. And as you remember, we did reschedule Godspell for the summer. So that was helpful to remove the production costs out of there and because ticket sales still were slow.
Okay.
So we, you know, part of the plan in addition to identifying and securing contributed revenue is to get rears in the seats and, and a plan to, for outreach, you know, schools, even assisted living and independent living areas, and, and then also adjacent cities. You know, I, I live in Apple Valley, and it's kind of like, why did I come to Bloomington to take on this, this madness? And this is, this is a gem that our neighbors, including me, don't know about. And the lift that we could get for the professional performances and galleries that we have here and get the audiences coming from Burnsville, it's just across the river from Eagan, just across 494. You know, it's, it's a gem. So we've got, we've got a lot of sources. It's just untapped, and we just need time to, to execute.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for clarifying about the, the business plan. When I looked at that section four in terms of next steps, I was kind of confused, was we're, we're looking at a business plan, you know, fourth quarter this year or fourth quarter next year? So, I mean, I, I think as, you know, I mean, I know this is a report, but I think more clarification around that would be, would be very helpful. I had a, just a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, and before I say anything, I want to just say how much I appreciate, it appears that you've taken comments and statements that have been made here at this body very seriously and come back with a plan, although very quickly and very difficult to turn around. I understand the, almost the impossibility of doing that, so I want to, want to just thank you for doing that. But as we, you know, you had made a statement during your presentation with regards to needing to have this money yet this month, help me understand why that is of critical importance. It makes a person nervous when, when I hear that. So if you could just talk a little bit about that, and I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, well, we're nervous.
I can, I can probably speak to that. So the, the first $150,000 went to pay three payrolls, basically, two, two in September, one that had been postponed, as we would say, until we got the money. And then shortly, the, the next week was the second payroll, and then last week was the third payroll. And then we made some additional, we made payment plans and provided initial payments towards those payment plans of our past-due vendors. And then we had a performance obligation with the Wonderland performance to pay out. So that pretty much rested that revenue. We have been getting additional revenue in. We've continued to accelerate some of the payments for, on our payment plans. But we have a, another payroll next week. And, and typically payroll is in the range of $38,000. And then we've identified, you know, what our other operating costs are, you know, rent, financial, we are outsourcing our financial support, if you will, and that has, that's, that's become a big nut to crack only because we're still doing a lot of forensic work because we really needed to do that through September 7th. So the money's coming in, but the money's going out.
So then when I hear you say seven months from now, that if you got the payment now, seven months from now, that also makes me a little bit nervous as well. You know, help walk me through, because I may have nothing in front of me, you know, other than, you know, what you said. But when you say seven months, I go, well, okay, well, we've got, you know, October, November, December, that gets me there, and then I got four more months, that gets me to April, and then this is theoretically through the end of the next quarter, the last quarter in 2023. Help me understand how you bridge that gap between here and there, and obviously it's a, you know, it's a loan, so just help me understand what, what that means.
Right. So, so big picture on that, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, you, you really do, you do get the point. So we, by not having a show right now, we don't have the revenue coming in from that show right now. By, into the early part of the year, we are going to have revenue coming in for the first show, the second show, the third show, and the fourth show of that season. So revenue, you know, starts coming in, but it doesn't start coming right now. And our pause and rescheduling of Godspell really puts a crunch on the, on the cash flow, if you will, of, of this season right now, which is a reason why time is of the essence on getting enough to cover the next few payrolls. That's the, the biggest picture. Why should you feel comfortable downline that, you know, we raised the million through these various sources that will be in decent shape? Well, first of all, we will have revenue coming in as we get in deeper, but the whole point of, of this reset and this pause now is to build out a meaningful development plan that can get our, our percentages, our post-COVID percentages better relative to contributed as opposed to earned income than they were pre-COVID, and get us, in any event, into a post-COVID world where we're at least where we were two, three years ago in terms of the earned revenue side of it. So we need to change, we think, the percentage of contributed versus earned, and we think we can do that with, with this plan we're building, and we've got all the indicators that, yeah, the value's here, but we also need to have that amount of time to get the earned revenue back to the level it had been.
Thank you.
Would it be okay if I, I'm sorry, would it be okay if I, if I answered that a bit?
Please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm so grateful to be here. I'm sorry to not be there in person. I just want to add simply that by giving us a, a general operating ramp, it allows us to stabilize the organization. We can get out of survival mode and into planning mode, as Mr. Gibbs has said. But just an understanding, last season, ticket sales were down because we were still coming out of a pandemic. The trend I'm seeing in other theaters in our community and around the country is that folks are coming back. We've been able to lift the mask mandate, which will allow more people to feel comfortable coming or that don't want to wear masks. People are starting to come back to the theater. So we're actually doing this at a time when audiences are starting to come back, so, so we have every reason to believe that we'll be filling more seats than last season just based on the trends. So there's confidence in, in our earned revenue going up, as well as the fact that we simply need time to raise money. As you know, and many of you know, it just takes, it takes time in relationships. As you know, and many of you know, it just takes, it takes time in relationships, and we can't do that in this short term. But general operating support for the next seven months allows us to really do that good work and to build up that, those revenue streams. Thank you.
Thank you for that, that clarification. Let me ask one last question, and then let's, let it go to some other folks, and then I can come back and ask a few other ones. So I'm trying to think of which one's the best one to, to ask here. You know what, I'm just going to stop, and let's, let somebody else ask, and I'll come back.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Good evening, everyone, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to play devil's advocate for one second, I wanted to just ask what your, what your, your thoughts were, or if you had any thoughts about what it would look like if you literally ceased operation for those two years, and you furloughed everyone, and you worked to build up that base of donors on the basis of the work that you would be doing. So, for example, what if Artistry was starting all over again? And I'm just kind of curious if you played out any of the scenarios like that, and as a, as a body? If you played out those scenarios and what, what you, you know, came to the conclusion of, that brings you to us and this ask?
Mr. Mayor, I so love that question, because yours truly asked, and the people behind me are probably smirking a little bit. Because yours truly asked that question and actually made the proposal back in September, that we simply suspend, that we cancel the season, we don't close Artistry down, but we cancel the season. And Kelly was already on board, and she gave me about seven really good reasons why that was actually... She wasn't even that polite, I think she said, that's just really a bad idea, and then she gave about seven reasons, and I yielded. But, but as I've thought about it more, because it has some appeal to us that have to go through some of this, the essence of our success is having credibility with the, you know, the contributors, the contributed community. And in the environment we're in, the, the thinking is going to corporations, the arts philanthropic organizations, or even the government arts grantors. When you have paused, and probably for two years, I think your number isn't, isn't a bad one, they look at everybody else that's out there who is actually in operation and has something to produce in, in the foreseeable period. It basically seems like an unsellable pitch. And so I think more than anything, it's that. Now, the other argument that Kelly made is that, you know, you've got a lot of very valuable employees who are contributing a great deal, aren't responsible for the mess we're in. And when they go elsewhere, there's no reason to think they come back. So I, I got to thinking about that, and I, and I work for a company, it's sort of a tale of two different theme parks. One had to furlough most of the employees, just based on the circumstances of the marketplace it was in for COVID. It was for like fourteen months or something. The other one was out for a couple of months, but it was in a different environment, and it, and we didn't furlough employees. Well, the consequence of the one where the workforce was gone, when they came back, it was a very different workforce, and with some more expenses. And that, that has stuck with me, that Kelly was speaking a lot of wisdom there in terms of, just that very practical, how are you going to get it done in the two years? But for me, it's the, the not really having a product, if you will, to pitch to the contribution side of it. And do we lose our, do we lose our longtime patron base? Probably some, they get other habits. Some would say, yeah, well, COVID gave them other habits anyway, so don't, you know, don't overplay that argument. And I'm sort of convinced by that, but, but that's in the mix. So, long-winded answer, but I love that question, because I was convinced I had the solution, we're going to pause. And I don't think that.
So, if you could, Mr. Gibbs, explain to me the, the shift from the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar forgivable loan to the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar repayable loan?
Yeah, well, the person to my left is a big part of it, because she was never too enthused about the three fifty plus one fifty, which gets us a half a million, when she said all along, we need a million. And Pat and I said, yeah, but we can raise the other million, and we still thought we were going to have a show right now, Godspell, and there would be some, you know, money coming in. So part of it is that the three fifty, one fifty formulation was, put too much pressure. It was unrealistic to think we were going to get the other half, so we'll cop to that. Secondly, just some of the feedback we've received, you know, there's, there's a difference between a legitimate loan that you're legitimately going to pay back with a very high probability of success. So basically, what we're asking for is to borrow capacity from the council priorities fund, recognizing that capacity will be restored over time and in future years, but basically taking some capacity out of service, but not taking taxpayer dollars. As opposed to the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar forgivable loan, really was a, put you in a different policy position, and I think had a different reaction in the community, which is taxpayers paying for arts, which might be great, but maybe they're not a taxpayer priority. So it's really those two things, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate that, thank you. So I'm glad you, you talked about the high probability of success here. And I've got a couple of different pieces of language here. The, the term sheet talks about repayment beginning on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And I think that's the city's language. And then there's the loan agreement draft, which is on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that day, and then a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. And I think that's artistry language, is that correct?
It was an earlier draft of an artistry concept. But Mr. Sable and Mr. Verbrugge and maybe Anne and some others sat us down and, and really soberly, you know, walked us through the probability of success and when. And we went back and really thought that through.
So, so which is, which is the preferred?
Is the, the preferred is June of twenty twenty-four, seventy-five thousand dollars, out until it's paid off.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I'll, I'll ask, so June thirtieth, that's the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
How many times has artistry ended with a fiscal year with seventy-five thousand dollars in the bank to be able to pay off something like this?
Well, in, in the event there was a seventy-five thousand dollar obligation for them most of the years, because it would be embedded into the, the budgets for, for the year as, as a, an obligation of artistry. You know, there was, there was a moment where we thought that December of thirty-first of twenty-four would be preferable, and we still do. But I think the city thought it would be appropriate to stick with artistry fiscal years, probably for the purpose of forcing us to budget that obligation into our, you know, revenue and expense projections. But we, we're not envisioning ending a fiscal year with audited financial reports that don't, that don't balance out.
That makes sense, I appreciate that. And just from a, you know, just from a practical standpoint, and I've heard this from a couple of folks, I mean, this is basically a, a ten-year interest-free loan. Have you approached a commercial lender, have you approached banks at the possibility of, of getting a loan like this? And if the city of Bloomington is the lender here, do we have any, do we have any collateral of any kind, basically, to back this up?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, and the manager raised some of that inquiry over the last several days. And we are prepared to pledge the collateral, you know, in the event artistry goes under. We are prepared to pledge all of the assets of artistry. Now, we're not pretending that they're vast millions of dollars assets.
John, I've seen the store room.
Yeah, but we have some assets, and we do have residual value in, you know, in the box office infrastructure. And we're prepared to pledge that. We're also, though, very mindful that, that there's a secondary position the city would have relative to the BMO line of credit that we have. So to the extent that we, the, the city could be primary, it would be fine. But, but there is a, there is definitely a UCC report that we would disclose to show you where, where the city would fall, which would be after BMO, Harris.
So if, worst-case scenario, we'd be number two in the payback schedule?
Yes.
Behind BMO?
I believe number two.
That's correct.
There's anything that could supersede.
Would, is there anybody else ahead of us, or would it be number two?
I was just confirming with Shelley, yeah.
Okay.
Will you be number two? Yeah.
Okay. Council, any additional questions here? Does that continue to think? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions here, hopefully. Is the city of Bloomington currently owed any money for rental space or otherwise?
I don't believe so. I think we, we cured that as part of the past due payments plan. Is that right, Kelly?
Right, we have, we have, from Kali, we have something, I was talking with the folks, but we're not, I don't believe we're behind. But I believe we're up to date, but I will see if I can confirm that while we're chatting.
Second question, in our listening session, we had heard from one of the arts organizations, other arts organizations, that since you do the box office, that they maybe had money that had been paid for their event that they had not had access to? What is the status of that, are you aware of that?
Mr. Mayor, Shelley, you weren't there, but Pat and I were there. Yeah, we did hear those comments, and the suggestion was made by one of the arts organizations that revenue received by the box office related to their productions perhaps should be held in escrow so that they have that level of guarantee. And Pat and I had a short conversation, and, and we spoke with the representatives since that time. And we can see no reason why we wouldn't set up an escrow, we'd be very comfortable doing that.
Okay. Is there anything in the past that is still?
Well, there seemed to, no, not that we're aware of that's outstanding, right? But I, there seemed to be, there seemed to be a report of quite a delay between one of the groups, like February, I think, performances and the payment over like, like three months. And which frankly, given what we've uncovered, nothing would surprise me in terms of those kinds of delays. But we're surely prepared to escrow those monies and, and make this virtually automatic.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we did reach out to all of our, our resident arts partners to let them know that we do have, have secured their money that has come in. It's for their ticket sales, it's a, it's a small amount of money, but we have definitely secured that and have communicated with them, and we'll certainly reach out to do that again to make sure that they have confidence in it, and we'll move on the actions that Mr. Gibbs suggested. But wanted you to know that we have been in communication.
Okay. And that would just be one thing I'd like to have clarified before we do vote on this, just to make sure the other arts organizations are in a good spot, but it sounds like they likely are. So from what I heard, you've got art classes going on now, you've got exhibits going on, and you have Bing coming up, so revenue generating activities. Are those activities, any and or all of them, positive revenue generating activities? Or do they run at some level of deficit needing to be offset by other sources of revenue? Or are they revenue positive on their own?
We sure hope Bing is positive on its own. And we do have gifts in the galleries coming up, which is a positive item. The, I think the classes, it would depend, and maybe Kelly could jump in here, it's going to depend on the class, some of them. I mean, ideally, you know, some of it's how you account for it all, I suppose. But in the moment, the idea would be that they would break even. But there are overheads that, you know, artistry provides subsidies to those classes.
Right, for each, for each activity that we've chosen to move forward with, we've analyzed the financial implications of each of those before we said yes. So our, our classes are able to cover the cost of their classes themselves, so there's not cost there. Gifts in the gallery raises money, the Minnesota State Arts Board funds helps support the gallery money there, and we have that money coming in. And then we've adjusted our budgets to match our revenue for holidays with Bing. So everything that we're putting forward, we're putting forward because we know that we can cover those costs, either through ticket sales or our contributed income.
Great, thank you. And then, let's see, okay. This is probably a question more for the city manager in terms of, and I don't know which city manager it's for, but one of them. In, in terms of the revenue to the city, because I know we own the art center, it's a, it's a city asset. And we have other organizations that have expressed concerns about when they can get dates and things like that. So if we have artistry with their performance, what is the financial model for the city? Like, you know, if, if we have artistry having an event there, are we blocking out other events that, you know, from other organizations that are financially stable right now? That is the question. And Mr. Verbrugge?
Sorry, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson. I think right now, the, the scheduling that works out is being done to maximize the, the amount of revenue that we can generate. And artistry has had a specific number of shows and specific scheduling, and that hasn't deviated, with the exception of what happened last month with the show being delayed and an event being subsequently programmed. But I don't, I don't think currently there are other things that are being, what was the word you used, Councilmember Nelson? Other things that are being squeezed out currently. There's, there's consistently been frustration by all of the arts organizations about the limited amount of capacity within the art center, which is a, you know, a driving reason behind the discussion to expand our art center. And we'll have that discussion later. So I'd say there's been an ongoing tension for many years about availability and capacity of stage time and rehearsal space. But currently, there's nothing that's being squeezed out.
Thank you. Just two more questions, if I might. Just to flip that around a little bit, if artistry were to shutter for some period of time and sort of reorganize and figure out where they were going, do we have a sense of the financial impact to the city of that? Because we would lose that rental in our art center, we would, we would still... So we'd, we'd lose that revenue for that time period as a city on the other side of it, and just trying to get a whole sense of, of that impact as well. Mr. Verbrugge, or Mr. Sable, whoever wants this one?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we did look at that number last month. I don't have that number at the tips of my fingers. I don't know, Mike, if you have something available?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, rough math, twenty-seven thousand dollars for the last three shows for Memphis Shrek and Kali Wonderland, twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I think I would add also, because I know that there would be an added cost to taking over the, the box office work as well that is currently being handled by artistry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I might embellish more on that, I believe the, someone in the staff did do an analysis of if artistry shut down or disappeared, what would, and assuming that the services that artistry provides right now is the policy of the city, so in other words, if the city stepped in to meet those, the number was, was a bit north of three hundred thousand dollars a year. And candidly, as we think about the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe higher, I understand, but trying to conservatively, it could well cost the city three hundred thousand plus each year if artistry disappeared. And so over the course of the repayment of this loan, you know, you're somewhere between three and four million dollars. And, and, and the loan, of course, is going to take some capacity out, but seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar capacity and, and build it up over time. So in that, in that cost benefit analysis, if the three hundred plus is, is accurate, in other words, if the priorities of the city stayed the same, we think this is a bargain. And, and why is it a bargain, and why does all this work? Well, the truth of it is, by this proposal, we're finding other people's money to spend for the things that the city otherwise would be spending taxpayer money for. And who are those other people? Whether corporate donors, they're nonprofit institutional investors, if you will, or philanthropists, they're individual donors, and they're the patrons who are paying the ticket prices.
Okay. And then last question, Mayor, if I might, the, as part of the planning process you're going through, are you going to be looking at each of the lines of businesses? And is the city going to be involved in that conversation in terms of, is it more efficient to have the city do the box office or a different company do the box office versus Artistry? Does it make more sense for some other organization to do the arts classes or does it make sense for Artistry? I mean, to really hone in on where you're best at, what you, and what you can do profitably, for lack of a better term, and that sort of thing. I mean, is all of that on the table in terms of reorganizing Artistry to be successful into the future, looking at what other opportunities, what other partnerships there may be with other arts organizations, things of that nature? Is, and what is the role of the city in that conversation?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, that is really the reason we didn't want to rush to, you know, get a business plan out there. We are dead serious about this idea of a strategic planning process that's meaningful. So everything is on the table. And if you think about, who are the stakeholders in this strategic planning process? The city's right there at the top of the list. We've already begun an exercise. We had professionals help survey 70 key stakeholders that are either employees or volunteers or the like, and we've, we've got the beginning of, of that input already in hand and, but institutionally, the city is the number one stakeholder to be part of that really totally all in strategic assessment.
Thank you, totally good. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't think this has been, there's been a lot of questions asked. I don't think this one has been asked. So what is your plan B if we do not decide, or we don't agree to move forward with the loan?
Well, we're in a hard situation, Mr. Mayor. We certainly have commenced the, the exercise of figuring out, are there other arts philanthropic institutions out there that are in the business of, you know, strategic loans and the like? And, and we've commenced that process, but there are a whole lot of competitors for that. And so the city looks so much better than the others because the city is, is the one that is actually a stakeholder in these outcomes as opposed to some of these, you know, large, very generous and attractive institutions that lend money to arts organizations in situations like this. So, you know, we haven't just been putting all the eggs in that basket, but this, but the more we look at that basket of eggs, the better this basket looks. We shared a fair amount about the financials. You know, we want to be careful how we answer that question, but, you know, we've been, you know, we're talking about borrowing money to meet payroll. So I think in some ways it answers itself. And I don't like being the bearer of that news at all, but I think that's where we, if we think of the parade of horribles that could result in the end of the parade, the end of the parade isn't, isn't pretty.
Well, I do think that this conversation has been super helpful. A lot of good, I feel like I have a lot better of understanding of everything that you guys have been doing to try to address the situation. I do think it would be helpful as a council to have a conversation around the risks and the benefits of the options in front of us. For me, it's, you know, it's kind of maybe 300,000 that we're going to be, that it will cost the city in the future if Artistry isn't around, but I guess I would love to see kind of in presentation from city staff, really, truly, what are the risks and benefits of us moving forward or not moving forward in the support for Artistry? And I know you have a pretty tight timeline, but I just feel like we have to have that transparency for people who, I mean, we're getting a lot of emails and a lot of questions from residents who, you know, are questioning whether or not we should do this. And I just feel, for me personally, I mean, I'm going to have to have a really strong case for, for why we would, why I would support this moving forward. And I do understand what you're saying around if we look at the long-term costs and benefits, probably is a better deal for the city if we move forward with the loan. But I just think it needs to be super transparent to residents in a presentation, in tables, so that we can really share that information in a way that's easy to digest. And then, I mean, I would even ask the question of whether we wanted to have a public hearing and allow people from the community to come and share their opinions. So just some thoughts.
Thank you, councilmember. I would agree with that. I think the, I like the idea of a presentation and a discussion. From a public hearing standpoint, given their timeline, I think we would need a decision by next week and I don't think we have time to publish and open up for a public hearing. So, but at the same time, I think, and as I look to the city managers here and say that I think this would be a good, a good agenda item to have a council discussion, perhaps one week removed from the information that we're hearing tonight. Maybe do a little analysis, get the staff perspective and be able to have this conversation. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I think it would help for myself understanding and I'm sure others as well. I guess my, maybe I misunderstood what the action is that's being requested here tonight is, but, I mean, we, we are receiving this update and authorizing directing city staff to negotiate the term sheet. Would that, I mean, that term sheet and that loan, that would have to come back to the council, would it not? So we, I mean, this would not be the final
No.
action on the loan, even if, I mean, even if we were to vote positively on the motion before.
No, I think, I think our, our task tonight is to provide direction. And I think as we kind of scaffold this direction, it might be to continue work on this term sheet. If, if we can come to an agreement, you know, continue work on this term sheet at what level we're talking about and to come back next week with a, a robust staff presentation and discussion amongst us as to whether or not this is worth going forward with.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. And I have a few comments to share, but I don't want to jump on anyone who's, who may still have questions or.
Is that Councilmember Martin with a question or a comment?
Okay.
Just real briefly, if in that presentation that comes back, there could be some explanation around, I just think of, I'm quite familiar with the AIM Center in Burnsville that's managed by VenueWorks. I'm Chan Hessen, they've got a lot of them. So if there would be a way to program the space potentially, so what are the cost implications if we turn this over to a for-profit organization?
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
I've got just a few more here that I wanted to kind of ask. One question I did have was in terms of how many, you know, we talk about this being a regional organization. How many other cities or counties have we, have we asked in terms of, you know, maybe a loan or some type of specific support?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think I can answer that. We've not approached any other local governments for any financial support.
And then as we, as we, you know, we've kind of talked a little bit about this as we go along here. 2024, if the term sheet ends up being what we end up doing, but in terms of getting back to the, to black, in terms of, you know, we, you know, you said three and a half, you know, the 300, $300,000 doesn't work, but now the seven, you know, gets you a little bit close. But when, when do we see, based on the financials, as we, as we look at this stuff, you know, we've got stuff that's still out there, when do we see ourselves getting back to a point where you're in black?
If the 750,000 loan happens.
Yeah, let's say we passed it next week.
Yeah, understood, Shelley.
It definitely won't be this year, this fiscal year ending June 30th. 2023, June 20, or June 2024. Possibly, possibly. We have a lot, we have a lot of legacy expenses to get through.
So part, part of the answer to that question depends on the definition of in the black because there will be a balanced financial sheet.
Yeah, it's kind of a tricky question.
Right, exactly. Because we got, we got the liabilities out, you know, for 10 years at that point, so.
Okay, well, if we take that 75 out of the, out of the mix, what's that? When the timeframe, when is that timeframe? You know, given the plan, I understand we don't have a business plan until the fall of next year, so I'm just, and I'm asking for something that doesn't have a structure around it, but.
It's difficult to, to make that assessment because we don't have the plan with the top line, you know, what are we going to bring in contributed revenue versus earned revenue? We have a good idea about the earned revenue, but it all depends on the contributed revenue. That's, that's the driver of everything and, and the driver of our budget and how we manage expenses.
Okay, just a few more here. I appreciate that answer. I think uncertainty is certainly warranted, given the circumstances that the organization finds itself in. In terms of that, what types of risks in terms of failure? Because my fear is in April, when the money, this, this piece runs out, then, then we're back here asking for additional revenue or, help me understand what, what risks lie ahead?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, there are all sorts of risks that lie ahead, but in terms of the financial risks based on this, the risk to the city would be if Artistry disappeared at some point, you know, in, in those 10 years. There is no risk that Artistry can't make that first $75,000 payment in the middle of 2024, so long as Artistry has a budget and business plan that has factored in that $75,000 payment. And given that by the end of that seven months, this roughly, whether it's 600,000 or 700,000 earned revenue stream is coming in, there's very little doubt about that piece. Because if we take the low number, we know that we're at 585,000, whatever that number is on the earned revenue before contribution number one. So if you kind of factor in, are we going to be able to make these payments a year from June when the first payment comes due? Believe me, the first item in the expense budget's going to be the payment of this particular loan. That risk isn't there. Is there a risk that Artistry disappears? Well, there's more risk if we don't do this infusion now than if we do. I would say that, councilmember. That's the best I can do, I think.
All right, so let me just wrap up here quickly, Mayor. So just a statement here, nervous that the, it wasn't clear in what was given to us today about the business plan. I would expect that that business plan would have been its own bullet, so I was disappointed when I, I didn't see that when it came forward. And secondarily, I don't really see a plan here and I wouldn't expect to see one in any ways, you know, a real reasonable one in terms of trying to get to an endowment, because those are the two things that I'm really looking for. Again, tough to turn it around. I do think this was good what you brought forward. But then finally, my, my question is, and this is what I, I struggle with, definitely supporter of Artistry, my wife is a big time supporter of Artistry. The question that I have for you is, what is my response to other art organizations that have not gotten this opportunity? I guess this would be the third bite at the apple, depending on how folks look at history. How do I respond to, to those other art organizations that, that see this, this regional, you know, historic organization come before the city, you know, kind of for the third time? How do we respond to them in terms of why it makes sense to get this loan? So if you could answer that for me, I'd be appreciative. That's it, all I have.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. There's, for this all to be working correctly, there's got to be a symbiotic relationship between all of the half dozen arts organizations that are housed here or call this a significant piece of their home. Only one enterprise can manage the facilities here and at this point, Artistry is designated as the manager. So none of them work unless someone is managing that facility. The box office, I think that's self-evident. Then all these enterprises use the box office. But the bottom line is, what we want to inject is a spirit of collaboration and, and a full respect for the symbiotic nature of all of these arts organizations. All of them do well when, better when all of them are doing well enough. And there is going to be a lead organization relative to the facilities and at this point, that's Artistry. Nobody else has a, a staff or, or an infrastructure to do that. Could you change that? Oh, probably over a number of years, but it would, it would be enormously disruptive and likely some of that disruption would, would bring casualties.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to just address it a little bit. I think what I heard you asking was about not just the resident arts organizations, but any arts organizations that make their home in Bloomington. What, what is the difference with Artistry? And that is a valid and important question. And I would just say that Artistry's very roots are, are being the arts organization of the city of Bloomington. Bloomington Civic Theater, Bloomington Art Center. It's been ingrained in who Artistry was from the beginning to provide arts services that benefit the city in the beautiful art center that the city built. But most of the art services that happen in the art center are presented by Artistry. So it is a different relationship than perhaps a theater that's housed in a different way. We are providing arts services in partnership with the city and that makes us unique. It makes us a national model. And what I would have loved to have done is come here with my big 10-year, we're going to blow this baby up plan, but we cannot get there unless we can, unless we can ramp up in this moment. But I truly believe that the unique business model of Artistry and the city and the arts organizations is something that we can be proud of as a, as a city and a region that we want to build upon. We don't want to bring back Artistry as it was. We want the opportunity, as has been, as Ben stated, to really reimagine what Artistry is, how we provide and how Artistry and the city of Bloomington are true partners in access to the arts for Bloomington residents and, and beyond that. And we do that by partnering with those organizations. So support of Artistry isn't just support of Artistry. It's support of independent artists, it's support of the resident arts organizations, it's support of arts organizations like Kali that come in and present with us. It supports the entire ecosystem of theater in the state by providing jobs that keep people living and working in the state of Minnesota. So supporting Artistry is a bigger support that, that ripples out to our entire arts community and we want to demonstrate that and we want you to go around touting the relationship. I think of the Minnesota Zoo and their relationship with the state and how unique and special that is. What does that look like for us as we, as we move forward? We want the chance to do that with the city as our, as our partners. I hope that's helpful and gives a little bit of a bigger picture that we're excited to explore if we get the chance.
Councilmember Loman, excuse me, councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, I, I have some, some thoughts and I really just wanted to, again, kind of sit back and, and let this discussion go the way it was going to go because obviously, as you all know, I'm, I am on the Artistry board as our, our ex officio council appointing. So I did just want to share a few thoughts about why I think it is important for us to continue this discussion and, and ultimately move forward. And I think that's the case not only for Artistry, but I think as has been demonstrated here tonight for the city of Bloomington as well. And I'm going to start off by acknowledging that that may be a somewhat unpopular opinion, perhaps even among the folks on this dais. We've had a fairly thorough accounting of how we ended up where we are, so I'm not going to go too in depth with that, except to again, acknowledge the poor choices made by previous leadership and the board of which I am a member, that simply put too much faith in that leadership without the proper oversight. And that is a mistake that is already well on its way to being corrected. I also want to be very clear that regardless of whatever else may happen between now and the January Artistry Board meeting, that our meeting tomorrow night will be my last as our city council ex officio member. I have heard the calls for accountability and I agree with them. And I, you know, I, like everyone else, have heard from the other arts organizations here in Bloomington and I've, I've heard from a lot of Bloomington residents, including, including, I should add, members of my own family, about, about this issue. And I think even beyond, and I'm looking at, at my colleagues on the board here tonight, even beyond the, the financial programming side, clearly there is a lot of work to do. There is, there are relationships that need to be built and, and strengthened with the arts organizations here. And I've heard multiple people tell me there is long, even the city manager tonight, there is longstanding tension. I don't want that tension to be standing anymore. That's work that needs to be done and, and quite frankly, it's work that Artistry needs to do. do. I recognize that art for its own sake was not why any of us up here were elected to the City Council, but I think it is worth remembering what Artistry has contributed to our, our community, to the people who live and work right here in Bloomington. And we talked about it earlier, there is a cost for doing nothing. And I, I think, you know, Mr. Gibbs didn't go so far as to say this, but I, I think we are pretty close to an existential crisis with Artistry here. And if Artistry were to go under, the number, as I recall, that staff put together was something around $380,000 a year. And even if that number were to come down by half, this, as, to borrow Mr. Gibbs' phrase, this is still a bargain after four years. And I think it's also worth remembering what Artistry brings to our local economy, the folks who eat and shop and do all those other things before and after shows and exhibitions, and what local businesses might have to say about that. And as a final thought on this, I would just ask this council to think about all of the subsidy, the TIF and land write downs and so on, that we have approved in recent years. And yes, I've, I've supported them too, so that we can meet a developer's bottom line, so that we could ensure that they get their own profit projections for their pockets and their investors' pockets. And I recognize that this is a difficult ask. And part of the reason for that is that the impact, the real impact that Artistry has goes beyond this building, it goes even beyond this city. I wish you all could have been at that fundraiser that they had the other night. It, it really was a remarkable night. I know Mayor Bussie was there, and former Mayor Neil Peterson was there as well. And I think, first of all, the fact that they raised $40,000 basically in one night shows what Artistry means to the folks out there. But had you been there, you would have heard story after story, unprompted, I might add. This was not part of the program and actually made it run a bit longer.
A bit long.
From successful artists in this area who got their start at Artistry, including Tyler Michaels King. And if that name sounds familiar to you, you may have seen a TPT special about him a few years ago. You may have seen him at Chan Hassen, at the Ordway, or as I did at the Guthrie in their production of My Fair Lady. But the first time I actually saw Tyler onstage wasn't at the Guthrie, it wasn't even at Artistry. It was about a mile or two that way at Jefferson High School. He is a Bloomington native and graduated from Jefferson just a few years after I did. And I first saw him as Tony in the Bloomington Summer Musical Production of West Side Story. Artistry gave Tyler his start, as it did for so many, and he's turned that into an impressive career as one of the Twin Cities premier performers and directors, and he's paying that forward by planning to direct an upcoming show at Artistry. And that stage was full of artists with similar stories, how Artistry gave them the opportunity, the potential that they had. And I think that's really the ask before us, is, does Artistry have a future or not? And no, the city of Bloomington is not a bank. But Artistry is not just another nonprofit. The city manager and councilmember aren't appointed to just anything. We don't allocate space in our seat of government to just anyone. And, you know, we, as I said, we all agree that there need to be changes made, and those changes are already underway, they've been detailed before. But at the end of the day, I do believe that Artistry deserves an opportunity to earn its future. And I guess in, in closing, you know, when I, when I, we spoke about this last time, I asked if providing that lifeline to Artistry advances our strategic priorities, purpose of this fund, and I still believe that that is the case. But I was thinking too about our recently adopted strategic plan and its mission, and I'm quoting here, "to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be." Not just live, not just work, not just drive through on their way to Minneapolis, be. And I think, given that statement, it is absolutely worth it to give Artistry an opportunity to have a future. And this is a loan, it does include collateral, and as has been discussed, it's not forgivable, so it, you know, it will be repaid as Artistry succeed. But I think, again, we need to be clear that it is on Artistry to earn its future. And I, I just so believe that with the leadership that we have seen thus far, from Kelly, from, from the new staff, from the, from the board, that that is an opportunity worth pursuing. So I do hope we'll move forward tonight, and I, we absolutely, this council, this community deserve a fair and full hearing and a discussion, but I think we absolutely should move forward tonight.
Thank you, councilmember. So council, here is where we're at. Councilmember Alessandro, I'm sorry, did you have a question, anything else? All right. As we talked about, this isn't necessarily a hard and fast decision point, but it's a decision for direction to staff moving forward. And I think it can break down into a few different options here, deciding not to move forward with any funding, the original $350,000 that was discussed at our last meeting, or the $750,000 that had been, that's been brought forward tonight. And I want to remind folks that if we do make a, if we do decide to make an allocation here, it's a budget adjustment, and according to the charter, we would need five votes to make that budget adjustment. And so as we look at these options of moving forward, I, I hope we can, I want to make sure we make it in such a way, understanding that we're, we're at least moving forward with enough nodding heads that this is a worthwhile discussion, because if this is, you know, if this is four nodding heads, this is not a worthwhile discussion if we're talking the $750,000, because it, it, it needs the five votes to pass. That's, that's one thing to consider. The other thing to consider, thank goodness the lawyer is sitting just two people away from me, because in fact, we don't need 10 days' notice to do a public hearing. So if we wanted to come back and have a, a public hearing, a more broad discussion on this, a fuller discussion, I could simply announce it tonight, that one week from tonight we'll be having a public hearing on this, and we could do it that way. And so, a public comment, that's what it would be. It wouldn't be a public hearing, it would be a public comment opportunity on this, on this subject. So that would be a possibility as well. So, Councilmember Carter, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Could we, would it be possible to move forward saying that we want an analysis of the options, the three options, with the risks and benefits? So like, what would it look like if we didn't do anything, risks and benefits? What would it look like at 350, and what would it look like at 750?
And that was going to be my final point here. Is that, that would be four days, that we'd have to have the staff turn this around in four days in order to get a new, a packet, and that is a, that's a quick turnaround. And so I agree, we probably should have that discussion, but I'm going to try and temper some expectations in terms of what the staff is going to be able to come back with in, in four days' time.
Thank you, Mayor. And maybe from the Artistry perspective, you'd rather it just be like 750 or, I mean, I don't even know at this point if the 350 is worth the discussion, it sounds like.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that you encouraged us to really focus on the needs and how not to come back here again. So the 750 is the number. We don't need 750 three weeks from today or one week from today, but we need 750 in the first quarter, in the fourth quarter of this year, and the first quarter of, of 2023, or, or we don't, or the path we envisioned isn't the path that could work.
Councilmember Lom.
So Mayor, I wonder, this all feels very rushed. I, I wonder if it makes some sense to bring this back at a later timeframe to get the specificity. I certainly don't want to look at any other plan that was 350, but I think the seven is what they're looking for. I wonder if it makes some sense to bring this back, either on the 31st, I'm not sure if we even have a meeting, but, or, or later on. I'm just curious about that, because that would give us an opportunity to have a more sober look at a, you know, I mean, this is, I mean, this is a large amount of money. And I think we, we, we need to, if we're going to have a public input, it gives folks the opportunity to be here and have that conversation. Mayor, is that possible?
I'm pretty sure, councilmember, we don't have a, a meeting the last Monday of this month and the first Monday of next month either. I believe it would be November 8th before we would meet again.
No, election day.
Mr. Mayor, November 14th would be our first meeting.
November 14th would be our, our next meeting in November. And I think that in terms of their timing for, to meet payroll and to make, to make this work, I don't think that works. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just from my perspective, in terms of, I appreciate that we, we may not get a volume back on kind of the risk benefit analysis, but the risks seem pretty obvious to me. I mean, Artistry ceases to be able to function in a reliable fashion without this being extended. So I guess I, I am comfortable moving this forward, because I'd like some of that additional information on if we didn't move forward, is there maybe a for-profit partner that can manage our large theaters, what, what that may look like? But I guess I, I'm just at a little bit of a loss for what the risk benefit analysis would be, it seems pretty binary to me.
Councilmember Carter, question?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it might be, like, we may understand that, but for people who might not be tracking all of the changing dollar amounts and nuance, like the public, it may not be totally obvious that there's going to be additional costs to the city if the Artistry ceases to exist. And why? Why would there be, like, continuing costs for us? Like, I don't, I actually don't think that probably the majority of residents watching would under, like, would know, would have that level of information around the partnership that the city has had with the Artistry and in terms of our facilities and the box office. And so to me, that would be laying out in a very transparent way. But I also agree with you that we should have, you know, at least kind of some preliminary ideas of, and if we went that route, like, what else could it look like?
Mr. Sable, question?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I guess the, the question I have in, in terms of a, as I'm in my head thinking about a sort of a risk matrix, solely from the perspective of the city, or to be inclusive of our partners at Artistry, is it sort of a, a joint shared document about the, the risks of each choice from the partnership perspective, or solely from the, as the owner of the facility and, and landowner of the facility?
My sense is, start internally, start with the city. Again, knowing full well this is a heavy lift in four days, so I would start with that, but then perhaps whatever analysis we can glean from Artistry's standpoint, I guess would be helpful for the discussion. So, Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought about it a little bit more, maybe, maybe I can construct my thoughts, and, and it may be a way to kind of present the information. So I think if I can infer from Councilmember Carter's comment, there is an ongoing, we'll call it deferred cost to the city as a result of Artistry doing what it does. I don't think that we've been very blunt about what that number is. And so I think the first question is, what is the benefit that, in deferred costs, that the city has from its, its relationship today with Artistry? Meaning, they are our box office vendor, they run our programming, they're responsible for XYZ. What is that, what is that number? If we could start with that, then I think we could put in front of people that if Artistry was not the provider of that anymore, someone could be, a for-profit, could be the city, could be another entity, would have to pick up that tab, assuming we kept the business running the way that we do it today. So if you still wanted to have your shows in the theater, and you wanted to have that programming, and you wanted to have the arts education, et cetera. So I think we need to present that information, because personally, right now, the struggle that I have is, I'm, I'm not sure why the city of Bloomington is the one being asked for these dollars. I gotta be honest, like, and I think that because we're not a bank, number one, and because we do grants to our art organizations, we don't do loans, we've, I don't think we've ever done one. And so I, I'm struggling to understand how we got into this position. And so if somebody could articulate for us the position that we're in, the uniqueness of the position that we're in, to use the terms I think that I've heard here tonight, then it would help a lot of folks make that makes more sense. Now, it doesn't necessarily change the outcome, but at least people would have a much bigger clarity, because without that, right now, a lot of people are just asking the question. You know, this is, this is the equivalent of 1% of our tax levy. That, our, our tax levy, every 1% is about 700 grand, right? So that's, that's significant in a, in a, in a, in a city that right now, we've all agreed, hopefully, well, you know, we, you know, 10 and 1/2% is what's on the table right now. I mean, that's hard for people to get past. And I'm not, I am a massive fan of the arts, so it has nothing to do with, like, where I'm placing my interests or anything like that, but it, it becomes a fiscal responsibility question. And, and so I would prefer if somebody could lay out for us, over the course of the last five years, Artistry's, Artistry has, on behalf of the city, in exchange for whatever it is, right, the numbers, and say, okay, that goes away, what do we have, what do we as a city have obligations to do with, right? If, if giving them the 750 guarantees it doesn't go away, and to, I think the term was a bargain, over, in four years, then let's, let's lay the numbers out. That'd be my suggestion.
Agreed, and I think that number, the number we've been talking here is the $385,000 that we'd still have to, responsibility for, for a box office type operation to, to do the work and to do some of the arts, the, the.
Gallery.
The gallery and the, and the, some of the different classes and so on. But yes, I agree, I mean, to lay that out in, in very stark detail.
I'm not sure people know, for example, Mr. Mayor, that, that, you know, if, if the, if the folks that are doing the lighting here are Artistry people, and the folks that are doing set are Artistry people, I don't know that people know that. And so I think it would be helpful to lay that out.
Okay. So I saw Mr. Sable jotting notes very feverishly here, so I think as part of the ongoing discussion, if we bring this back next week and maybe have a presentation and open up a public hearing and talk more about this.
Public comment.
Public comment, excuse me, public comment opportunity on this. Is, is everyone comfortable if we move, if we give the direction to, to move this toward the $750,000 that we've been talking about, at least that we continue this discussion to next week, based on, again, the public comment and some of the information that folks have asked for? Am I seeing enough nodding heads that we want to be able to do that? Councilmember Coulter?
I didn't realize my mic was still on. I guess, Mayor, my, my question was, do we feel that that direction is encompassed with the motion that's in the, in the packet? And if so, I would be willing to make that motion. If not, I would be willing to make an alternatively worded motion.
I don't know if we have a motion this evening, or if this is direction right now. I don't think, I don't think this is a motion.
There's a motion in the package. We may not.
I don't know that we need a motion, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're right, we don't need a motion for direct, for direction. I think it would be good to have a statement of, you know, a reiteration of what the understanding is that councilmembers can shake their head at. And so Mike has been taking notes furiously there, I know, but let's just make sure that we get it clear.
Understand, we'll, we'll do that before we, we give the formal and final direction. Councilmember Lom, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, and I, I know we're going to probably move forward next, next week, but I, I just think that this is very ambitious and very difficult to try to make a decision by this next week. Now, you know, certainly, I don't, I'm not advocating for having a meeting on the, on the 31st, which is Halloween, or for the first, I just, but I just, I, I just, I'm just nervous about that, trying to put something together, get, get the public here and have a meaningful dialogue. I, I just, I, I just get really nervous about that. I, I think trying to bring the presentation, I think, is one thing, having public dialogue is another thing, but having both those two things go off very well, I, I just don't know that that's a wise thing to do in four days. So I, I don't agree with that. Certainly, if, if folks feel that way, I think that we've certainly got what we, we have here, that we've already started down this process of, of giving the, you know, the $100,000 grant, so I think we're kind of already in, into this thing. So I, I, I would be, I would be surprised if we, next week, given that short timeframe, make any other type of decision other than what, what Artistry is asking for. So I just, I just don't think this is wise. Just one, one, one councilmember's opinion.
Thank you for the input, councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of some of the other comments that were made is, you know, I just want to make sure we understand the cost to provide the services on an ongoing basis if that was a city responsibility versus the cost if those services weren't provided. I mean, there's a certain fundamental bottom line that we have to do. I mean, somebody's got to take ticket sales for arts organizations. got to take ticket sales for arts organizations. What does that cost look like versus all of the classes and stuff like that? And don't take this to infer I'm going any particular direction. I just want that, that data point for, for myself, for the community. And then the other thing I think that's important, I got some advice from a mentor of mine who knows about the city of Bloomington a little bit. And, you know, I understand we're looking at a loan here, and I think it makes sense why you did that, because that'd be paid back. So it's, so it's not a grant, it's not a direct infusion, it's not coming out of the levy, it's temporarily going out and coming back is at least the goal. I think we need to just be straightforward with the community about what it costs to have arts here. Community supports arts, community loves arts. Let's just put it out there, what does it cost? I mean, we, we pay a lot of money for this facility, regardless of what we're talking about with artistry. I mean, we're spending a lot of money every year, it's in the budget. I think we've talked about it, but I don't know that the community totally understands the level of investment that the city has in that. And I think part of the question related to that is that when the facility was built, it was built for the community. And now, for, for many reasons and, and decisions that were made, artistry in and of itself is a regional organization. And we heard it tonight and how they have an impact statewide and regionally and things like that. Candidly, I, I, I'm not sure that I'm entirely comfortable with that direction. I mean, versus a community theater, versus a community art gallery, versus, you know, community opportunities there, that, you know, I don't know that that was the right direction to go. And, you know, right now, the city of Bloomington, us up here, are being asked to loan, you know, $750,000 for the region. Well, you know, why is it up to the city of Bloomington to regional, fund a regional organization? You know, it, that's a much different thing than a community organization. And so that, that's part of kind of what I want to get into a little bit more detail, is what those costs for providing a community-based arts organization, a community-based arts programming versus, how much of the tab are we picking up for the region? How much are we asking Bloomington residents to pick up for the region? And, you know, that may be nothing, it may be something. That's part of, where we look at the financial stuff that I'd like to get my head around, because I don't frankly think that's totally fair to the city of Bloomington, to its residents, its businesses that pay, pay the taxes here. So, that's all I got. But I, I would also, to Councilmember Lohman's proposal, I don't know that Halloween is the night to do it, but, you know, I do believe we have the opportunity to call a special meeting, and I would be open to looking at a different date if we did the first, second, something like that. I would be open to making myself available for that opportunity to give artistry, to give staff a little bit of additional time. I would take a different night of the week to come in and, and hear from the public and, and, and do it that way. But that's just my opinion.
Councilmember D'Alessandro?
I have just a quick question for you, Mr. Mayor. When you asked the question, I mean, one of the considerations we have to make is, does doing, does asking staff to do all this work potentially change the way we're all gonna vote? Right? Because I think I heard you say, in order for us to get this across the line, five of us have to say yes. And I, I'm not sure if you were asking for a temperature reading on that from us tonight, but I'm, so I'm posing the question, are you asking for a temperature reading on that tonight from us? Because, you know, I mean, I know that the original 150,000 number was a five to two vote, but, you know, that's when we thought we were gonna get a $350,000 ask around the corner, and that's not what's in front of us today. So I, I pose it to you, and I'm, I'm fine with whatever you decide, but I also don't want to waste our staff time and energy and money to pull together and call a special meeting and all this stuff. If at the end of the day, you don't have five votes here, and nothing that you would hear from there is gonna change your mind. Now, I'm, I'm of the opinion personally that maybe, but I'm not sure that it's over 50%, maybe, I'm not sure. Like, that's why I would like to ask you.
I'm, I'm always hesitant to take a practice vote, a pretend vote. I'm always, I'm always very hesitant to do that, so is the attorney. And I, what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is there's a lot of folks who are seriously and honestly on the fence on this. And I know this council, in many instances, has asked for that little bit more information to continue the discussion, just to think about it a bit more, to get a bit more detail, a bit more reference, a bit more, you know, substance there before they make a decision. And I, I think, and I could be wrong, but that's kind of what I'm hearing right now, is that some folks have unanswered questions and they're not quite comfortable with whatever decision they're going to make right now. And it's just an opportunity to maybe have one more, one more discussion about this, perhaps with public input, perhaps with a little bit more of the questions and the, the requests for data that the council has asked for. Or we could make the motion and take the vote tonight, and, and if we don't get to five votes, we are up or down with, with, with this proposal for $750,000. Personally, I think I'd feel better with one more night of discussion on this. We've talked about this a long time tonight, and I'd like to wrap it up. But, but I think some of the questions that I keep hearing from folks and some of the not quite ease with one, one way or the other, I think it, it might benefit for another couple hour discussion. With whatever level of information we're able to garner. And I understand, I mean, we could put this off forever, we could talk about this forever, we could ask, keep asking for more information, and I don't know that we're ever gonna get to the point where we say, yep, now we have enough information, now we've got, now we're really 100% comfortable. But I think to get us a little bit further down the road one week from tonight might be worthwhile time. Councilmember Nelson?
I was just gonna say, I agree with you. I think there are substantive issues to, this isn't just kicking it down the can. I think we've heard, you know, a serious conversation about costs and things like that, as well as the public comment period. So I think those are substantive enough that this is not just delaying at another meeting because, you know, it's an uncomfortable decision. It's a tough decision, it's gonna be a tough decision tonight, it's gonna be a tough decision next week or whenever that decision is. But I would, I would support getting that additional information before making up my mind.
Thank you, councilmember. And the, the city attorney has told me that a direction would be fine, but she would prefer a motion. So we will just, I'm gonna throw this motion out now, that I would move that we receive the artistry update to the city council document dated October 12th, 2022, and authorize and direct city staff to continue discussions with artistry and return to October 20, and return to October, on return on October 24th, 2022, with additional information consistent with the discussion.
So moved?
That was a motion. So I'd be looking for a second.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were making the motion.
I was.
So, okay, so I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one, with Lohman in opposition. We'll see you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilman, for all your time.
Staff, do we have what we need, I think, moving forward?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I, I believe that we do, and, and we will, Leah Hughes has already been notified that we're gonna be doing some brainstorming tomorrow, so.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you. And thank you all who were here this evening, and I'm sure we'll see you all next week as well. At 9:38, I will call the consent business. Councilmember Coulter has her consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we, at least in my time on the council, this might be the record for the latest.
It might be, we're pushing.
Consent. I, at this time, have not heard of any specifically requested holds. And I'm not seeing.
Well, I thought about holding 3.2 to make our, somebody nervous over there, but I won't, I won't hold that.
I, thank you. I was actually going to, to make a note of that, that we, item 3.2 is to appoint our city assessor, and I'm, I'm sure our new city assessor looks forward to the long phone calls explaining the assessment process and, and property taxes and so on. So with that, I will hold item 3.1, the resolution to accept donations, as we always do. But with, unless anyone else has any holds, I will move items 3.2 through 3.20.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept our council, our consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero, with Councilmember Carter stepping away for a moment. Councilmember Coulter, item 3.1.
Thank you, Mayor. As I, I mentioned, this is the resolution to accept donations. I just wanted to call out a few very generous donations to the city. Our Parks and Rec Department received a donation of a canoe, which is not something you see every day, but a tree donation, it's made at Duane Golf Course, a variety of donations to Creekside. One thing I did want to point out, it looked to me, there was a typo on Exhibit D, which is a donation from Northwestern Health Sciences University to co-ed for the Veterans Appreciation Event in November. I see, I'm assuming it's supposed to be $2,100, but it's 2,1000. So I'm not sure if that's supposed to be 2,100 or 21,000. But as it stands, it's not a traditionally written number, so I wanted to point out that, that, that's probably an editorial mistake. And then a variety of donations to our Bloomington Police Department. Our community is always, always very generous and, and just wanted to thank folks for that. So with the, the presumably editorial change as noted, I will move item 3.1, resolution to accept donations as listed.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter, to accept item 3.1 on our consent business. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Item four is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and we have but one public hearing this evening. Item 4.1, it's a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the City Code related to parks and playgrounds. Allison Warren, our recreation manager, is with us this evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your patience. Welcome. Good evening.
Happy to be here. I am here presenting to you some changes to our, our city code here from Chapter Five. Last time I was here was in 2020, and we made a couple of changes there. So I'll go through them in order on the sheet there. The first one is in reference to allowing alcohol in some of our parks. Last time I was with you, we allowed regular beer, and at that time, we did not include wine into that list, and so we are requesting to make that addition to our parks. In addition to that item, we have, in that language, it said in designated picnic areas, but within our definitions, we did not define what a designated picnic area is. So we have made that adjustment to allow for areas as given permission by our director, Ann Catrue back here. And that's it for that first section there, pretty basic changes. The next session, section is in relation to the hours of our parks. It was previously listed that parks were open until 10:00 PM, that we didn't really have an opening time. So they are now written, listed there as one hour before sunrise, unless otherwise posted. And we did include that additional language for specific amenities such as pickleball, where we don't want people playing at 5:00 AM and really hearing that ping of the pickleball in your neighborhood. So adding that ordinance allows us to have different hours for different facilities that we require for those types of facilities. And the final one is removing the language that requires a permit for usage of a drone in a city park. Following some conversation with some federal agencies and our fire department, we've determined that, and the League of Minnesota Cities has requested that the federal government kind of overtake that and not have our local municipalities manage that situation there. If there are other things that come up in the future, we have the ability to add other ordinances, but not adding the requirement for a permit from the city. With that, I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I think the only question that I have regarding the drone, drones would still be a, a subject to all applicable laws and regulations such as flying over crowds and that kind of thing.
Correct. Yep. So they still follow, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that is correct. You would still be able to use a drone as long as you're following federal regulations.
Got it. Counsel, any additional questions here? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick question with regards to the, the beer and wine. There's so many different varieties of things now. Does this encompass all of those? Like, you can buy a, you know, like a Tanqueray and tonic in a can or a seltzer, you know, things like that. Does this prohibit, allow? I mean, because I think that's a little bit different than bringing your bottle of vodka to the field and hanging out, watching your kids play all day.
It is my understanding, but I would go towards our, my city attorney here, that it would include anything malt liquor, so that would be your seltzers, or wine in a can, or, you know, your regular beer.
Is Mander sheen, anything to add?
Correct. That is accurate.
Okay, very good.
It's, it's good that y'all know your malt liquor's better than me, so.
Additional question, counsel? No questions. So with that, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on item 4.1, regarding an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the City Code related to parks and playgrounds as described. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item 4.1 this evening? No one coming forward? Mr. Brillert, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.1?
Mr. Mayor, no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember D'Alessandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, concerns on this? If not, I'd look for action.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make that.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the City Code related to parks and playgrounds.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember D'Alessandro, to amend Chapter Five of the City Code related to parks and playgrounds through ordinance. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Councilmember Lohman, summary publication.
Mayor, I move a, to adopt a resolution that authorizing summary publication of the ordinance amending park regulation.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Coulter, for summary publication on item 4.1. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, our organizational business this evening. First item under organizational business is our time, an update on our time of sale program. And we've got Bertadette Gillespie, our community, from Community Development here, and I think there's Duke Johnson as well with our building and inspections team. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Mayor and city council, so back in February, we presented, and so I'm here to give our six-month time of sale program update. Starting out, I just want to go over our, restating our goals for the time of sale program. I believe if we're continuously trying to meet these goals, then we'll continue to thrive, as you will see. So we're, our goals were to provide equitable and consistent customer service by providing consistency of reports, costs, and professionalism. Providing a more transparent and efficient service for residents while holding inspectors accountable for evaluations that they are providing for the residents and realtors within the city of Bloomington. So a quick recap, as it has been a year since we originally came to the council to talk about this time of sale program update. Since then, council passed the ordinance changes in February of 2022, and we went live with the program changes in April of 2022. So just to recap, the updates to that program included the time of sale energy audit, as well as going to an RFP-based contract with evaluators and adding additional staff to help complete the time of sale inspections. Next slide. So after the approval in February, we had several meetings with realtors and evaluators to discuss the program changes and expectations of evaluators, as well as to discuss expectations of the city. Should we, no, there you go. So we had two virtual meetings, one in March, one in June, with realtors and inspectors, and then private evaluators. In May, we did have a briefing publication that talked about the time of sale program as we went into the busy season for the time of sale inspection program. And so that went out to residents in the briefing. And then our ongoing efforts to provide a more continuous information and to gain feedback. So we're doing a time of sale experience feedback survey that is given to all applicants when the time of sale is scheduled. And then there will be a Bloomington time of And then there will be a Bloomington time of sale seasonal flyer that we worked with um C E E on, and so that will also go out um at the end of October. And that's going to provide contact information for low-cost energy services and rebates to Bloomington residents. Next slide. So we looked at all of the data and the comparative data from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Um, as you can see, in twenty twenty-one, we looked at the April first to September thirtieth timeframe, and we compared it to twenty twenty-two with the new program. In twenty twenty-one, we had a total of eight hundred and ninety-five total inspections, five hundred and thirty-eight of those were completed by independent evaluators, and three hundred and fifty-seven were completed by city inspectors. In twenty twenty-two, seven hundred and seventy-one total time of sale inspections. Only two of those were completed by independent evaluators, and seven hundred and sixty-nine of those were completed by city inspectors. So that additional staff gave us the capacity to complete those. The numbers of hazards found on time of sale initial inspections, so in twenty twenty-one, five hundred and twelve of the eight hundred and ninety-five were found with hazards, so at least one hazard found, or fifty-seven percent. And of those fifty-seven percent that had at least one hazard found, the city inspectors were the ones who found the ninety percent of hazards, and private inspectors found ten percent. Six out of ten homes inspected were found to have at least one hazardous item in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-two, six hundred and seventy-four of the seven hundred and seventy-one were found with hazards, or eighty-seven point four percent. So we had an increase of thirty percent in hazards found from twenty twenty-one, and eight out of ten homes inspected are found to have at least one hazardous item. We have four additional um points of information here. So in twenty twenty-one, we didn't know how many additional permits were generated or um pulled due to a time of sale inspection, and so we updated our permit software in order to track that. And so we had two hundred and twenty-eight permits that were required as a time of sale inspection, which includes trade permits and building permits. And the number of private inspections since go live, we had two. The number of time of sale feedback surveys is fifteen, and the number of energy audits was seven hundred and thirty-six. So in addition to the other time of sale changes, the energy audit went live April first, um, and I just wanted to highlight some of those numbers. So seven hundred and thirty-six evaluations through September, with our highest month being May with a hundred and seventy-four. And um some of the facts that were pulled out of that data, over fifty percent of Bloomington homes need additional attic insulation, and over forty percent of Bloomington homes have outdated or inefficient heating equipment. So we are hopeful with the C E E flyer going out in the fall that this will help with rebate opportunities for homeowners um to update these items if they're new homeowners and make their homes more energy efficient and lower their utility costs. So, next, yep, thank you. So going back to um those time of sales surveys, so we didn't get as many survey responses as we were hoping. Um, we are hopeful to get a response rate up by working with our permit and inspection software uh vendor to provide an additional link to the survey to be sent out at the conclusion of each inspection. So currently, it's sent out when they pay for the inspection, and that inspection could be scheduled in two weeks. By the time that inspection rolls around, they forgot about the survey. So we're working on that. And then of the fifteen total survey responses, thirteen rated responses were either very good or excellent regarding their experience, with two skipping that question. Fourteen responses were given on recommending the time of sale inspector to a colleague uh with fourteen agreeing or strongly agreeing, and one skipping that question. As part of that feedback, I just wanted to share examples of some of the comments that we did receive. Um, these are additional feedback comments outside of the standard survey questions. So um the survey taker chose to add additional comments regarding service that they experienced. So when asked for additional comments on the survey, they stated that inspectors were exceptional and courteous, comfortable presence, knowledgeable, communicating clearly, very personable in answering all of their questions. And when asking, asked if they faced any barriers while trying to schedule the inspection, none, the entire experience was smooth and straightforward. So uh finally, what are the next steps? So building and inspections is providing a fall test house for all of the evaluators, which includes the internal and external evaluators. This is scheduled in November with a city H R A rental home that we're going to be uh using for the test house. And we are performing ongoing audits on the inspection reports, both internal and external. The building official currently reviews fifty percent of the inspection reports that are completed each week. And then finally, just to reiterate that, to address those low survey results, we're working with that permit vendor so that we can provide an additional link to the survey to be sent at the conclusion of each inspection. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the update, the, the six-month update. Uh, the, the question or the suggestion I was going to have is find, try to find a way to increase those, that number of fourteen. I mean, I understand that a first-time kind of thing, and uh somebody may have made the example today, you know, if you have a good experience at McDonald's, you don't necessarily rate that. So it's a, that, that tells me that uh the people are satisfied. If they were dissatisfied, we'd certainly hear about it. And so the fact that we only got fourteen and they were mostly positive is, is I think a good thing, but do what you can to, to try and get that number up, and we'll be able to get a better handle on things, a better understanding, so. But otherwise, it looks great. Good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dalisandro.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I feel like, um, I feel like this is a great start, and um I just wanted to say thank you. I know I was pressing the city staff a lot for data as a result of the decision we made early on, and so I want to be, I want to acknowledge uh the work that the team has done um to get this information. I hope you're finding it as valuable as we are. The two hundred and twenty-eight number, uh, I, I want to, I don't want to assume, uh, it feels like you're making a correlation, not, you can't necessarily determine it one to one, but a correlation between the number of, of permits that were pulled as a result of the inspections that two hundred and twenty-eight fixes were made, if you will. Um, now, can you, can you tell me of the, this, I apologize, I don't have the numbers in front of me, the seven hundred or so that um issues that were found? Um, did, did they all require permit, permits being pulled? And so like, how, how should we, how should we look at whether or not people did the work that was, 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 you know, found in the, during the inspection?
Yes, uh, council, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro. So with a time of sale inspection, they look at fifty-two plus items, and so they can have from one hazardous item, which is a smoke detector that isn't working, or they can have a water heater that needs to be replaced. So on the smoke detector that's not working, they're allowed to replace that, call for reinspection, they get their inspection, we don't get a permit. On the water heater replacement, they would need to get a permit for that, have a contractor install that, and we would get a permit for that. Additionally, if they had multiple things that needed permits, if it was an HVAC permit and an electrical permit and a plumbing permit, we would count that as three permits, and so that's included in here as well.
Okay. So it, it, we shouldn't make the leap I'm making in my own head necessarily, because one person could have, or one household could have had three or four permits, others would not necessarily have any.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, anything additional? Very good.
I do just want to say um that throughout this process, we've really evaluated the service that we're providing, um, and it's made us really look at our processes. And so um even though like Councilmember Dalisandro said, you really made us dig in, but I think that has made it such a more successful project and product. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Duke. Well done. We'll move to item five point two. This is a, uh, our proposed capital, ten-year capital improvement plan.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Mayor and Council, uh, this is a normal presentation that we would do each year about this time with our C I P information, so a, a lot of this is um repetitive information. So in the um, do the timing, I'm going to kind of move a little quicker than, um, so if you have questions, let me know. So our C I P is truly a planning tool. It's long-range, um, it's a ten-year tool. We try to um match up our C I P along with our budget cycle. Over the last three years, we've really mirrored the same timeline, and as we're looking through our budget process, um, years twenty-three and twenty-four, we matched to those long-range plans to make sure that everything and what people are budgeting for is in the C I P. The C I P, um, we've only included items that are fifty thousand and greater. And then uh probably about five, six years ago, we added a, in a report, an executive summary, and these are items that are in the five main categories. We need to correct that area there. We used to have a larger one, we had alternative transportation, and now that's included in the surface transportation area of one million dollars each, so for the project. So that executive summary is in the beginning of the report. Um, and if the council does approve this report, um, when it comes forward in December with a public hearing, um, it's still no guarantee that the project moves forward. So um again, it's a planning tool, and um it contains a lot of projects. There's about three hundred pages in this document, so. And then anything that is purchased, um, depending on the dollar amount, either comes before the city council to approve or through the city manager. Timelines, um, as the council is aware, we finish our budget process um with the levy approval in December, but the actual budget book is finished in March, and then we start our new budget process again um in April, and along with that, we start our, looking at the C I P items again and prioritization of those and their dollar amounts. So staff works on the C I P items through the summer. Um, and when budgets come in, and we are refining the budgets throughout the summer months and early into September, um, the C I B, C I P is continuously being updated. Uh, it, tonight is the seventeenth, and it is before the council for discussion items. And then this Planning Commission normally needs about a month to review, because they do go through in detail and look at each project, and they need to make sure that those projects are in compliance with our comprehensive plan. And then we'll have a public hearing in December. And this is on the executive summary, our ten-year expenses, majority are in city facilities, because um as we know, we've had a number of fire stations, garages, um, uh, public community health and wellness center, um, expansion of the arts, um, big golf, all of those are in the city facility area. Um, surface transportation, there's a lot of roads, activities out there. There's some activities in the South Loop, mainly in water and sewer areas, and then um some park development. We have some projects out there in the park development area, but big and those items are in city facilities. Um, majority of the parks are in the five million dollars a year. Um, some of the golf is in the park area, so those would be in what's in the park area. In a two-year timeframe, um, the big project in the park development area, in the twenty-three, twenty-four area, is um Bryant Park. Um, stormwater, a lot of that is normal enhancements in the water, sewer, and storm. Again, the surface transportation are the roads. City facilities, the big area that we're looking at in twenty-three, twenty-four is big. Um, South Loop, again, the water, little bits right now, but water mains coming up. In the twenty-three and twenty-four projects, how we divided the funding sources, uh, there's a lot of balances that come in through time. So city funds would include um anything in the utility funds that are coming through those, um, facility funds that we are levying or um moving monies through um as charges for services, so it goes into the city funds. Um, and as you've seen, uh, P I R bonds and assessments at seven point five million, we already bonded for that piece in August of this year. Quarterly, you receive this report through C I P, one weeklys, and it tells you the status of the twenty-two projects, a little bit left over of the twenty-one projects, and what we're looking at for twenty twenty-three. So it's kind of giving you what we haven't finished, what we're working on right now, and what's coming up. So little updates on some nice pictures of what's happening in the art center, black box theater, multi-use space. Um, a lot of changes are happening there um that have been long overdue for some of those pieces. There's um a lot of public safety pieces for the arts that are in the C I P in the next few years. The fire station construction that's underway. Some pictures of the Civic Plaza roof, the chiller, uh, fleet garage doors, um, the Civic Plaza doors on, on those doors, um, they were bid out um early, early spring, and waiting on the last pieces of the supply chain issues. So as you know, they're underway right now to get done, and hopefully within the next month or so, they'll be finished. Uh, several trench chains were finished this year. Park development at Dred Scott, and a lot of the improvements that have been happening out at Dred Scott, with tennis courts, fencing, trail activities. Uh, here's got those James Avenue lift station, the water treatment plan renewals, and Northwest Water Tower restoration. And then just one hundred and sixth at thirty-five W, and just a piece of the payment management program from this year. Some things coming up in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we've gathered where some of the bigger projects are, so the thirty-two million for the big renovation, community health and wellness, and then the garage are some of the bigger projects coming forward. And then just in the twenty-three, twenty-four area, look at the, some of the big areas on the facilities. Uh, again, on the ice garden is down there for the thirty-two million. And the parks, um, the Bryant Park is in the five million dollar range, um, and then just normal activities for some of the park and playground replacements. Uh, water and sewer, a lot of this is just normal annual activities in the water mains. Same with road, and bridges, the big ones coming up there is the Nicollet Avenue reconstruction from twenty-four through twenty-eight timeframe. Uh, that's a large project, we'll be paying some of those dollars for that. And again, um, currently in the twenty-three timeframe, we do not anticipate issuing any bonds, at least what's in the plan. Um, we issued bonds in August and in early part of the year for fire station four. So um right now, the, the nearest time that this plan would indicate that we would have bonds would be early in twenty twenty-four for the Bryant Park activities, and then later in twenty-four for the P and P. So in December, when the council looks at the final document and um hopefully approves it, oop, it went too fast there. Uh, that would indicate a green light. Um, several of the twenty-three projects are kind of being looked at already. It, it wants to move. It just wants to be done with that. So, quick fingers. Um, so I'll stand for questions if the council has any at this time tonight, otherwise, um, you can send them to me and we'll keep discussing.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Uh, I can be kind of a heads up that it was coming, um, and, and I know that this is not a traditional question around natural resources. I, I know we just saw on our survey today that uh, that the community saw, you know, the quality and the prioritizations there, um, in that, in that top quadrant. But um for those folks who are, who are looking at this and just trying to get clarification in terms of where natural resources uh fall uh in the C I P, uh, where might I look to see where those are? I know you gave me a couple of examples uh when you emailed me back, but I just, you know, I know there's one in, in my district, but uh, where, how would I look for that? How would I know that? Because it's not relatively easy to kind of uh parse that out.
In the category of park development, you would see all the park areas, including the natural resource area. So that would be the large category, and anything in there would have the timelines of um years twenty-three through thirty-two. So um I know earlier today, um, there was a question on a big project on natural resources, and there's one, um, and I want to pull up, that was page two hundred and eight. That's why I brought the computer up here.
That's 209 and 299 are the ones you gave me.
So on page 209 is a new project. So PD is the project, starting identification 23, indicating for that CIP 23 would be the first year, and it's project 005. And it's labeled Moyer-Central Park Natural Resources and Trail Improvements. And currently, it has, for design and construction in 2025, just under $17.2 million for that project on page 209 of the 299 pages. So there is a natural resource and trail improvement project listed in there. And I believe, Anne Catry, our park and recreational directors here, if you need more questions on the natural resources.
No, and I think that you've really gone out of your way to, and I just want to let the general public know that, you know, even though it's not easy to see it in the CIP, it's there. We are prioritizing this, we're looking into this. You know, I mean, we've got the Minnesota Valley, Bryant Park, I mean, there are just a ton of things that we're doing around this. And I just want to thank staff for turning this around so quickly at the beginning of this year. That's a lot of work, and there's still more work to be done in that area. But again, thanks staff for that work, and it is in the CIP.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about Veterans Memorial. I mean, I know that there are some limitations to what we can do, and I guess I'm just curious because I know it was in the 2022, and then that was one of the ones that was red. And then kind of what conversations are we having moving forward?
I can answer a portion of this, but for the most part, we as a city cannot fund the memorial piece. We as a city can provide the land piece for it to sit on, but unless the city attorney or...
And that was my, I guess I'm curious why we had it in the CIP. Was it just to flag it for fundraising support, or?
I think the way, correct me if I'm wrong, after hearing this presentation for a dozen years now, I think within our capital improvement plan, within our CIP, we put in all projects, regardless of whose projects they are and who's paying for them. For example, four years, the redo of the 35W Bridge over the Minnesota River was in our plan, although it was strictly a mid-dot project, a mid-dot funded project. And so it's just a matter of keeping track of everything. Tell me if I'm off track here. It's a matter of keeping track of everything, it's making sure that everything is there that we've got going within the city. And I'm this far off, is that what you're telling me?
Mayor and councilmember Carter, we have eliminated most of those ones where we've only touched the project. In this one, what had been indicated is other sources where they needed to get grant monies or, and this needs to be in this document for them to apply for grants to get other locations. So that was more of the piece of that. So I don't know whether they may have put grant requests into it. But for us, it's in the document, and they needed to bring other sources to the table, not city sources. So other than our piece of land, they needed to bring other sources for it to get built.
Thank you.
I did my best, I'm sorry. Council, any other comments on the proposed 10-year capital improvement plan? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one, because I know we always enjoy seeing the fruits of our labors, and because it was mentioned in this presentation tonight. But as I came to the farmer's market on Saturday to get my emergency supply of rhubarb, not once, but twice, I heard separate individuals comment about how much they liked the new doors on that side of Civic Plaza. It is, I mean, folks are already noticing that improvement, and I would not have expected that from doors, but here we are.
Yep, it was nice to have them open on Friday, and they're no touch. So I mean, you know, nice not to have to touch a doorknob. Flu season coming up.
Exactly. Council, anything else? If not, thank you. Thank you once again. We'll see you on this one again soon, I'm sure. Let's move on to item 5.3, first of two budget discussions. This is on our 2023 Utility Enterprise Funds, Fleet and Facilities, Internal Service Funds, and Public Works General Fund budgets. All right, Carlson, our budget manager is with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have a lot of budget information for you. We're going to start off with the four utility funds. Then we're going to also do the fleet fund and the facilities fund and public works. Followed by that, we will do some more of a deeper dive into the public works portion of the general fund to give you some information about what's in that 2023 proposed budget. And then we also are going to have our chief information officer, Amy Chaney, talk about the IT proposed budget. So I won't be doing as much talking this evening. I have all of the people behind me here who actually carry out these operations, and they're going to be coming up. So we're going to start off with the water fund, and the utility superintendent, Scott Anderson, is going to start us off.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
Okay, starting off with our water fund, the water utility covers operation, maintenance, and renewal of the public water system, primarily distribution and treatment. The utility works to provide equitable access of uninterrupted drinking water that meets or exceeds state and federal water quality standards at an affordable rate that ensures long-term sustainability, including system renewal, as well as having the capacity to respond to emerging issues such as unregulated contaminants and climate impacts. So I'll show you now a number of graphs and tables, some of which you've seen previously, that'll try to give or hope to provide a background and a little story as to what we're looking for. Maybe you can help me, Matt. Next slide. So this is an approximation of the application of our asset management program for the replacement of water main infrastructure. The blue line with the spikes represent expenditures for replacement of infrastructure based strictly on age-related failures. So basically, as infrastructure has an approximate age, it ages out, it fails, that's its replacement. The orange line shows what we're actually expecting to expend after applying actual asset condition, as well as accounting for things like reliability, criticality, and redundancy. This is only a model and an approximation, and it's a little bit dated. We've made some adjustments to this along the way, and when we get to the sanitary sewer model in particular, that'll give you a better representation of what we're aiming for. Next slide, please. So a lot of what drives revenue requirements for the utility, you know, along with those expenditure requirements with regard to operation and maintenance, as well as asset renewal, water consumption. So what this graph shows you, the blue line buried in there is kind of what we're using as our current average, 2013 through 2018. The red line represents 2020 as we were impacted by COVID. And I was hoping not to talk a lot of, kind of getting used to not saying that word anymore, but it's relevant here, particularly when looking at the last few years. But you can see very clearly when shutdowns and things began in March and early spring, that red line dropped way off from our average. And then, you know, with some seasonal variation in the summertime, generally remained below our average consumption. And we'll look at this in another format in the next slide. But the gray line, then, 2021, again, early in the season, definitely displaying impacts due to COVID. And those impacts were business closures, particularly in hospitality and hotel industries here in Bloomington. And then come springtime, we had the start of the drought in 2021. And so presumably, a really good thing for water utilities because they sell a lot of water during drought, and you can see some of those spikes in June. A lot of that was ultimately, again, had some, was a little tempered due to effects from the pandemic. But a welcome infusion from a revenue perspective nonetheless. At the end of 2021, we ended up, despite the most significant drought since 1988, it was about an average year revenue-wise. And then, of course, the yellow line, 2022, again, another drought year. However, it came on rather late, and so didn't see impacts from that kind of kicking above average consumption until June continuing on through the summer and into the fall. Next slide, please. So this is just a cumulative look at water distribution. And again, the blue line is our average. Red is 2020. You can see that significant drop-off due to COVID, a recovery in 2021, and somewhat of a recovery in 2022. I think we'll end up pretty close to that average by the time we get there. Next slide. So this is one of my favorite, and I think most useful slides when starting to dig into water use from our customers. We've got our three primary customer classes here, commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential in an annual winter and summertime timeframe, along with tier-two usage. And so what this gives you is a look into winter use, which is important because it represents sort of those typically nondiscretional uses, things that are going on within the household. And summertime clearly then contains what can be considered little, you know, discretionary uses, irrigation, water recreation activities, car washing, things of that nature. This graph is good, or this chart is good, because it tracks well, and the data behind it supports, you know, the quantity of tier-two usage and who's using it and when they're using it. As you can see in that middle chart, our tier-two usage in the wintertime is very low, almost nonexistent, but there to a lesser degree. All of that annual tier-two uses, the majority of that annual tier-two use is coming in the summertime. And so that leads us to conclude that it's outdoor-related type activities. I guess, you know, the other thing I can mention too about that tier use, back in 2018, 2019, we analyzed tier-two use of our single-family residential customers to try to determine if there was an inequitable impact to large families or low-income properties. And what we found out at that time, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of our other affordability and equity efforts in a couple of slides, but what we found out when we did at that time was that it was on the order of 90% of our single-family residential properties utilized less than $15 a month in tier-two water. We also looked at properties whose structure had a value in the lowest quintile. So what we tried to use as a surrogate for income, because we didn't have that information available to us in terms of customer accounts, that use dropped to about $2 a month in tier-two use. And I think 65% of those properties use no tier-two water at all, and about 49% of our entire single-family residential customer base use no tier-two water on an annual basis. And so the conclusion from that was that we didn't think at that time that tier-two use was a significant impact to our customers. Next slide, please. So speaking, you know, climate being the, one of the biggest factors that influence customer use, particularly that tier-two use water that you saw in the summertime, the climate, and I apologize, this slide's a little different from the one in your presentation. I made a couple of quick edits this morning, so that's why this is different. Updated climate data for 2022. We have just moved into, just recently moved in kind of into that extreme drought. Most of the summer, we were in more of a moderate to severe drought characteristics. The difference, biggest difference between the drought this summer and last summer, I think, was timing. We had a decent snowfall with early spring rains, and so river levels, and with enough precipitation in the northern part of the state, river levels remained high. That was our biggest trigger in 2021 with regard to the restrictions that we had in outdoor water use. We haven't experienced, you know, we didn't experience that this year. Our well levels have remained within normal range, and hence no restrictions. This year, however, it's still, gives us pause as we need to continue to monitor the impacts for operational planning in terms of if well, you know, if this drought continues, you know, then we can start to see how that impacts our well levels and make some decisions on how we would operationally make some changes. And again, just, I guess, for people watching, and just as a reminder, you know, Bloomington is extremely fortunate. Being a dual-source system, our contract with the city Minneapolis allows us to purchase ample water supply. We do, we like the water we make at our plant, and we can do that a little more cost-effectively than purchasing water. So we do that, and that's the preference. But we do have that operational flexibility that is really unique and a nice thing to have. Next slide, oops, sorry, go back, sorry. This was just kind of a drought comparison from last year to this year. So you can see certainly more significant last year, but we're moving in that direction again, so looking for some snow. Impacts to revenue, so this, you know, 2020 is our COVID year, and these numbers are our distribution and production through August, so this is not a full year, but the same timeline for comparison's sake. Significantly, significant increase in 2021, but about normal. And 2022, not quite as much, which kind of tracks with the weather and things that we saw this summer. Next slide. Everybody's favorite, the softened water rate comparison. And again, happy to be able to report that we're near the bottom in terms of rates for softened water as provided to customers when compared to a pretty wide swath of comparable Next slide. So we've tried to, this slide, we've tried to continue to take a look at affordability and equity in as many different ways possible, using the information that we have available to us. And so what this map shows you, the percent of tier-two water used by an account, and then the delinquencies, percent delinquent accounts in these different areas. And so the first question, you know, is what's an acceptable delinquency and what's a typical tier-two water usage? Those conclusions aside, we can definitely see some trends on this map. And so two things we're working on currently is, one, we have in place, received some grant money from Met Council and the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District for Water Efficient Fixure and Appliance Rebate Program. That's aimed toward updating inefficient appliance... That's aimed toward updating inefficient appliances and fixtures, but then also long-term hoping to, to lower, lower those rate, you know, those, those, that water consumption in those areas. We're going to, we're, we're currently using this information to, and this, this will be a citywide, this is a citywide program. I think the council has seen this previously. But we'll be using this particular information to, to kind of target and aim that program to, to the areas where we see the, the largest tier two usage and the largest delinquencies and hoping to address those. We're also working at the U.S. Water Alliance and, and some partners of theirs to look at some different ways to provide customer outreach to accounts that aren't kept up to speed. And so we're using, using this information in that way. So here's a history of water rate increases from 2018 to 2022. 2021 was, was a, a strong effort to address, be sensitive to the impacts from COVID. And so we, we tried to keep that rate increase down that year. And then 2022 was, was a little more typical. Next slide. And for 2023, we're, we will be proposing a seven and a half percent rate increase. And that's both for tier one and for tier two. Next slide, I think is just a snapshot of our long-term model. That Kari might have some, some words on.
Yes. Hello? Oh, sorry. So I just want to say too, I realize the time and we started late this evening. So I think the rest, we're going to try and go through pretty quickly. And I know there's a lot of information that's in, in the agenda packet and that has been prepared. So just want to mention that. So as we go through, we'll try and go a little quick. But this is a long-term model. Things I'd like to highlight on here is that we do have some American Rescue Plan funds. That's highlighted in blue for the revenue. And that is about $4 million and that's for water infrastructure projects. And however, you can also see that we, we are forecasting to go below the 80%, which brings us into the red when we're comparing the working capital, the cash in this fund to the working capital goal. So we're still, we're not getting down to a really low amount, but it is, the American Rescue Plan funds did help. And some of the things that have been causing that is what Scott was talking about with the, in the past, the wetter than average summers or the impact of COVID on revenues. So, so that's water. And then I'll just stay up here. Are you going to go through a couple of slides here with wastewater, Scott?
Couple of slides with wastewater, it's a lot faster than water. And primarily, so the wastewater utility. Wastewater utility is designed to, to operate, maintain and renew the wastewater sanitary sewer system with, with the goal of providing again, that uninterrupted service, minimizing system blockages and infiltration and inflow. That's important because we pay for that, we pay Met Council for that treatment of that wastewater. So when we get inflow and infiltration, we're paying to treat clean water. And so we're, we're constantly chasing that as well. Next slide. So this is, this is our, the wastewater version. Thank you. Wastewater version of that water utility asset outlook. So this is just sanitary mainline. And so the, the blue bars represent the, the proposed expenditures. After 2031, 2032, it's, it's, it's kind of a placeholder number. So we're a little more accurate in the years prior. The gray line is our, is our no funding line. The, the orange line is, is the funding or is the condition. So the gray line is a condition, assuming no funding. The orange line is the condition with the funding that's, that's being proposed. And then you've got from zero on top down to six zero is, is a perfect pipe. Six is a completely failed pipe. And, and that correlates to about 21% of all pipe in a failed state versus less than 1% in a failed state with that funding model that's up there. This is still a work in progress, but gives you a better handle and gives us a better tool to actually, when it comes to identi- identifying specific problems in that CIP and then giving you a better understanding of the actual dollars that we're going to be asking for long-term and what it means to the overall condition of the system. Next slide. Comparison residential wastewater rates, not as low as water, but in a pretty decent spot. And keep in mind that 60% of the expenditures for this fund are passed through the MCS Metropolitan Council of Land and Rural Services. About 12% or so is, is capital and, and just, you know, 30% or so is operations, just operation maintenance to keep, keep the water flowing. Next slide. History of wastewater rate increases. Again, in 2021, we were able to, to have no increase. Part of that was due to a reduction in our MCS charges. Some of that's due to this fund is just a little bit easier to manage because it doesn't, it's, it doesn't react as strongly to, to the seasonal variation that the water fund does. So it's, it's, it's a bit more predictable. And so we're, it's just a little, little easier. So this year, we are proposing a 3% increase to stay on track with, with our asset renewal and, and MCS fees and, and operations. Next slide is for Kari.
So with this proposed 3% rate increase, this model works out very well. It's definitely in line with the goal for this fund. And as Scott mentioned, the largest part of the expenses are what we pay to the Met Council for sewer treatment. All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
So next, we have stormwater.
So mayor, if we have questions.
Yeah, question?
Oh, sorry.
Just really, I'm just trying to keep this as succinct as possible. So with the fire pension, we have ways in which to kind of try to control that, you know, because it can kind of go up and down. With, with the, with the water utility fund, is there any way to, to follow such a model to kind of lessen that impact in tier one or, or tier two? Could we do some type of model like that where we could bank some money to try to, as we, as we go through year after year and, you know, have those increases? Is there a way to kind of try to stabilize that? I know we've done that with other things. Is there a way to go about doing that?
So mayor, city council member Loman, since it is in a, it isn't a separate fund, we do have, we do have working capital goals to cover that, knowing that we're going to have the, the variable revenues. So we do have amounts in the working capital goal in case there are drops in revenue.
Is there a way to further do that so we can lessen that impact? I guess that's more sort of what my question is, is to kind of, from year to year, not, you know, try to keep it between one and, and, and just a few percentage points by increasing the amount that we put in there. I don't need the answer today, but I'm just, I'm just curious about that. Because I look at that delinquency chart and I just wonder if in that tier one, if there's a way to kind of drive that down by reducing the amount of, of increase each year.
Mayor and council members, that's something we can look into. It would have to be some other source of revenue, like taxes or other funds, just off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Next utility fund is the stormwater fund and Water Resources Manager Brian Greedle is here.
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, so the stormwater utility fund, we use it to, our, some of our goals are minimizing disruption to the traveling public, protecting structures from damage related to stormwater runoff and providing for the construction, maintenance and operational strategies that help us improve runoff water quality. So, and what this kind of means is, you know, we, it's, you know, instruct, infrastructure repair, maintenance. And it's repair and maintenance activity includes street sweeping, annual maintenance of our best management practices out there that work on improving runoff water quality, permit compliance and infrastructure renewal as well. So the storm sewer infrastructure represents about 256 miles of mainline pipe as well as thousands of manholes and catch basins out there. Next. Our stormwater rates are determined based on the land use categories at a per acre, per acre rate. And for 2023, we're proposing a five and a half percent increase. And so in this, in these land use categories, each single family parcel is considered one-third of an acre. And so with the 2023 proposed rate then of $8.75 per month. Next. And a chart with the same cities that Scott uses. So in 2022, our, our annual rate for a single family was $99.48. And with the five and a half percent rate increase, we are at almost $105 on an annual perspective for the single family home. So it puts us in kind of that upper half of those cities that are listed there. So the orange line on the graph there being what's proposed for 23.
And the budget model for the stormwater fund, right there. So this shows about $4.7 million for capital outlay expense. There's also about a million dollars for debt service from past capital projects. The working capital balance here is, looks very healthy for 23, 24, 25. It does dip down a bit in 26, but then comes back up in future years. Are there any questions for the stormwater utility fund for Brian?
Council questions on stormwater? No questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we've got solid waste fund and the solid waste project coordinator Laura Horner.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the city's residential solid waste program includes the collection of garbage recycling, organics recycling service and our yard waste program. It also accounts for our bulky item management program and forestry and the removal of diseased trees such as the Emerald Ash Borer. It accounts for the cleanups after major storm events and private property environmental health abatements. Next slide. So tonight I will run through our proposed rates for our residential solid waste program, beginning here with our garbage rate. So our garbage rate is made up of four different components. That first component being our collection rate, which is set in our contract with the consortium. For 2023, that rate will increase 3% this year, given the price escalators that are set in that contract. The next component is the disposal rate. That's also set in our contract with the consortium. It's based on the garbage tipping fees at the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center where our garbage is processed. That is proposed to increase in 2023, 4.6% from $66 a ton to $69 a ton. So that's reflected in the rate there. We also include an administrative charge that covers the city's billing, customer service, education and contract administration. We are proposing an increase by 10% this year and will note that this has not been increased since 2020. This increase does reflect just the increased cost within our solid waste fund for our utility billing services, credit card fees and other city internal service costs that we operate under. And lastly, the, the rake is composed of our, the state solid waste tax and Hennepin County fee that we collect on behalf of the county and state and pass that on. So given these elements of our rate, we're proposing the four and a half, about a four and a half percent increase for our garbage rates this year. Next slide. So for our recycling rate, that is made up of two main components. The first component is our collection rate. Again, that's set in our contract with consortium and that will increase in 2023 by 3%. And the next component of that recycling rate is based on the recycling commodity adjustment offset. That's the RCA O. And this offset rate is a form of a revenue cost share where the city shares in the risks and the rewards of the recycling markets with the haulers. And this rate, it's based on the previous 12 months of published commodity market prices, the composition of our recycling that we determine every year through a recycling sort. And it is also based on the annual tonnage of the recyclables that we collect in Bloomington. So the market price for recycling commodities over this past year has been very high. And so the city is, we will be paying less for, to the haulers for processing our material than in previous years. And this does help to keep our monthly customer recycling rate fairly stable. We do know that there's a potential for this portion of our rate to change in future years if recycling markets change, which can happen in periods of economic downturn. Also just want to note briefly here that during our recycling sort, we did see, there's a picture here on the slide, more, overall residents are doing a great job recycling, putting the right stuff in their carts. But we did notice that some residents are continuing to bag their recyclables. So you can see a perfectly great bag of recycling there, but because it's in a plastic bag, that whole thing goes to the garbage. So as a city, we're going to do a better job of, you know, educating to residents that you cannot put your recycling in plastic bags. The plastic film gets tangled in the gears at the recycling facilities. It's a big hazard there. So it's just another message that we're going to work hard to get across to residents. Next slide, please. The next rate is our organics recycling rate. The organics rate is made up of two components. Again, that first component is based on our collection rate, which is set with the haulers in our contract. That will also increase by 3% in 2023. And the second portion of that rate is a small administrative fee to assist with the city's operation of the program. We are not proposing to increase this rate in 2023. As council will recall, organics recycling is a new service that began in March of 2022 here in Bloomington. Like regular recycling, it is a rate that is paid for by all residents that have city garbage and recycling. And residents do need to opt in to receive their organics carts. Currently, we have 25.3% of our households are signed up for their cart. Our goal for the first year of the program was to reach that 25% signup rate, which is seen pretty typical in communities with new organics programs that are all pay. So we think we're right on track with that, hitting that 25% target for our first year. And we expect that this number will continue to uptick as more residents become familiar with the program. Next slide, please. So we know that organics is still a fairly new concept to people here. I briefly just wanted to share some of the outreach that we've done this past year to help ensure success in the program. As you can, when the program began, we did hold a number of organics recycling workshops where residents could get their questions answered. We've done several presentations with different community groups, you know, with the understanding that they can help us get the word out about the program. As we have rolled out the program, as, as you might understand, we get a lot of calls from residents as well with feedback or questions. And one of the items we hear is they would like the compost back. They want some of that finished compost that they're, they're helping to create. So we did hold a compost giveaway this, this year. And we gave out 600 bags of compost and we intend on doing those in future years as well. Also, when we've surveyed residents about organics, we know that one of the main barriers residents have for getting started is just not having their kitchen set up for success. It's, you gotta get a new container in your kitchen to separate out the materials. You have to have specific bags. People have busy lives and it's just not always their first priority. So we've been doing a lot to try and help get those supplies out to residents to get over that barrier. We've distributed hundreds of kitchen collection containers at the farmer's markets. And also now when residents sign up for the program, about a month or two after signing up, they do receive a letter from the city just checking in on how organics is going. And it provides them with a voucher to pick up a free box of a year's supply of compostable bags at Fratelloni's local hardware store in Normandale Village. So we've had over 1,900 residents go to Fratelloni's to pick up their bags. So they're very excited about this partnership and we hope to continue this in future years as well. And we'll kind of continue that outreach in future years. This is just a brief comparison slide. It shows that our organics rates are competitive with what we're seeing in surrounding communities. It shows that our organics rates are competitive with what we're seeing in surrounding communities that have that same all-pay program. And as you can see on the bottom there, below the green line, are communities that have subscription programs where you just pay if you want access to the service. And those rates are consistently higher, and the participation rates are much, much lower. Next slide, please. So as council may recall, council approved our new bulky item management program components in October of last year. And so this plan includes a reimagined every other year curbside cleanup program with limited items accepted. It includes an annual community drop-off event, periodic swap events for items like gardening tools, and a regular monthly curbside collection of reusable and recyclable bulky items. The goals of this new program included really reducing the volume of waste that sent to landfills, increasing access to bulky item management, and keeping our program convenient. So with this new program rolling out this year, we are proposing a 16% decrease in this curbside cleanup fee for 2023. And this is really attributed to moving the curbside cleanup to an every other year service. So that allows us to bring this fee down significantly. But we will note that the cost to landfill items during curbside cleanup does continue to increase significantly year after year. We had a 26% in that tipping fee this year for landfilling. And we do anticipate that that'll continue to increase in the future. So that is kind of included in our, in our long-term modeling of costs for our bulky item management program overall. A small portion of this rate does go towards cleanup after a major storm event. And residents will notice a change on the name of the fee on their utility bill for 2023. So instead of referring this as the curbside cleanup fee, it will be moved to the bulky item management fee to better reflect our program overall. And I will go over these briefly here, but several components of this program did begin this year. We held our first citywide recycling drop-off event this fall. We had over 900, well, we had 994 exactly vehicles come. We were anticipating just about 1,000 or so, so this is kind of in line with what we were hoping. Residents could bring appliances, tires, scrap metal mattresses, paper for shredding, and bikes to that event, and we did receive a lot of good feedback. And importantly, it expanded access to residents living in multifamily dwellings to have an opportunity to dispose of their bulky items. We did hold our first swap event, which again, we did consider a success this spring. And I should note during our curbside cleanup event, we did see a reduction in the tonnage of material that was collected, which is attributed in part to some of the new limitations on what residents could set out. And we are in the process of starting a pilot program for this monthly pickup of reusable and recyclable bulky items that is slated to begin in November. So we'll kind of start piloting this in a few neighborhoods so we can kind of learn and see how it goes, see what we might need to kind of update or change in some of our guidelines to residents before we roll it out citywide in 2023. So this slide here is just, again, a summary of our rates overall. And as you can see, again, this includes our, the cost for garbage, recycling, organics recycling, and that bulky item management fee. With the difference in each of these lines just being the size of the garbage cart is the only difference there. So as you can see, overall residents will see less than a 1% increase in their solid waste charges for 2023 in this proposed budget. And so these are just a few things to keep in mind that will likely continue to drive our rates into the future, as we've shared. We will continue to have price escalators set in our contract with consortium. We'll continue to see, you know, increasing costs for disposal of garbage and landfilling that will be reflected in our rates. We also know, again, that the recycling markets are, can have highs and lows, and that can, to some extent, affect our recycling rate. And lastly, we also do, we are fortunate to receive annual score grant funding from Hennepin County for recycling and organics recycling. So this funding does contribute to our overall programming and education and outreach and staffing related to these recycling initiatives. And these are all items that will just continue to impact our budget going forward. Next slide. And then just a couple of things to note about this year's proposed budget. The budget does include an additional solid waste staff person for 2023. As council is aware, our solid waste program is growing as we add additional lines of service with organics recycling programs citywide and those new components of our bulky item management program. So with these, as these new lines of service are added, the additional capacity is really needed to make sure that we're still providing that high level of customer service, as well as to ensure customers are participating in these solid waste diversion services to meet the goals that are set forth by the city. The main tasks of the solid waste staff person would include assistance with those elements of the bulky item program, including coordinating the swap events, planning for our annual drop-off event, and helping us with the communications and coordinating on the new monthly pickup of bulky items. They'll also assist with expanding participation in the curbside organics program, as well as assist with expanding participation and just expanding our ability to provide capacity and support for multifamily dwellings. Currently, the solid waste does not have the capacity to be supporting recycling in multifamily units. They are required to recycle by the city as well as the county. We, there is kind of increasing county support for expanding access to recycling at these buildings. So we would like the staff person to really help us dial in what's going on in multifamily properties, as well as just help us expand recycling and organics collection at our city facilities and parks that are also managed by this fund. Lastly, we do have a placeholder within our budget for consulting services to assist with a rate study. We know that council has talked in the past about solid waste staff looking at our overall rates to see how we might make those pay-as-you-throw tiered garbage rates more aggressive in future years. And this would help us further incentivize residents to reduce overall waste generation. Again, so we do have just some money set aside in our budget. If council is interested in, in us taking that step forward and going in that direction, we'd be happy to provide more information to council at a future meeting if that was directed. So I think that wraps up.
So for the long-term model that shows the working capital balance, I'll just highlight in the expenses where it has curbside cleanup. You can see expenses for 2020, 21, 22, and then nothing for 2023, and then it for 24. So that's been worked into this model with a new program. And the, with this proposed budget, it does dip down into like the 80% range, and even into the 70s compared to the goal that we have for this fund, but it does come back up in 2029.
Councilmember Lomond.
So I just wanted to say, I hope my understanding in terms of the study is this is the same study I've been asking for diversion, but also creating the incentive for those, those folks to try to pick organics for that. But I'd be fully in support of that. And I know we have some other council members who would also like to look at some other things with that. And I hope those are all included in that, that study as well.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Councilmember Lomond just touched on the point that I was going to make about the, the rate differentials and, and, excuse me, incentivizing diversion. So I do, I think that is something absolutely worth looking at. The question I had, though, was about the bulky item rate. There it is. So doing the math, reducing that rate by 71 cents per month would save a household roughly eight and a half bucks a year. My question is, is, I mean, is the goal, you know, knowing that we're going now to every other year curbside cleanup and that sort of thing, is the goal to further reduce that rate in future years? Or what, I mean, I, I guess what I'm getting at is it seemed, it would seem to me that if we're doing, I mean, there are obviously there are other things that we're doing now, but the biggest expense was curbside cleanup. And it would seem to me that by having that every other year, it, it kind of feels like we should be saving more than, than eight and a half bucks a year.
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember. So that, the 16% decrease in the rate is actually taking into account what we think future years curbside cleanups might, what those expenses might look like. As I have mentioned, we do know that the cost to landfill is continuing to increase. So we're projecting, because this is an every other year program, that could increase by 50% for our next cleanup. And we also do now have new program components. So this new, the monthly pickup of bulky items, that is estimated to cost maybe about $150,000 a year. And we, we do think, once that is rolled out, residents are going to see that as a big, as a, as a great new service that's still kind of providing an every other year program.
Sure, and I, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, you know, part of the reason that we made these changes was because those costs were, were not sustainable. And, and I, I guess I'm just wondering if maybe further changes may need to be discussed in, in future years. So, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Can you remind me of the garbage service? How much of it is the collection service cost, and how much is the tipping fee?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers off on me off the top of my head, but the, the collection rate is probably two-thirds of that rate. And then the tipping fee is what's variable in each rate for the small, medium, and large garbage. So that continues to increase as the cost, your cart size increases.
Okay. And remind me, just a quick follow-up there. That we adjust every year based on how many tons we actually send there? We're measuring that with the haulers? Is that accurate? So if we're able to divert more through organics, through recycling, through, you know, not having as much solid waste, that fee can be somewhat managed by our overall community doing a good job on that? Is that accurate?
Mayor and councilmembers know that, so the solid waste collection portion and that disposal portion are both set in our contract. So the disposal portion is not based on our actual tonnage generated for garbage. It's just a portion of that rate. So back when our contract was first negotiated, there were estimations kind of placed in there for what we might anticipate a resident to generate. And I think in future contracts, that's something that we can look at. As, again, I think that's something that we did push for in our, this last contract renegotiation to better reflect what our actual disposal costs are. Currently, how it's set is it is a fixed portion of our rate.
Okay. And then on the recycling component, you said the recycling market was really good, but you're proposing a 3% increase, which is, matches the 3% service increase? Why is that not lower if the recycling market was good and we have that price escalator? Or I guess an escalator can go up or down, right?
Certainly, Mayor, Councilmember. And that's sort of the, the reason why we are not proposing to reflect that as a decrease in our rate. We do have a cost savings this year, so we are paying a little bit less to the haulers for recycling. However, we know that those rates really could change in future years. Over these past two months already, we've seen significant drops in recycling markets. So we're anticipating, we're going to be having to pay more to the haulers next year for, for recycling. So it's just a way for us to try and keep that rate steady overall, instead of residents seeing larger fluctuations that they might not fully understand what's happening.
Okay. Just two last questions. Do we have an idea on the organics? How many tons of garbage have, or how many tons have gotten into that program? How much is being diverted?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to provide that to council in a, in a one weekly with an update.
Okay. I just, I think that's an important thing for us to continue to track, which relates to my first question, which we need to incorporate into future negotiations with them. If we're reducing how many tons we're bringing to the HERC, we should be saving that money as a community. My last question is, where, what is the funding source for the staff position and the consultant? Is that levy? And is that built into the levy? Or is that the administrative fee and/or some combination?
Mayor and council, so that would be based in our administrative fees for the program, as well as through our grant funding provided by Hennepin County. So we're able to use some of that funding for our staff position as well.
Okay, so that, that is not coming out of the levy? That's not part of that levy conversation? Okay.
No, strictly through the utility bill.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Very quickly, yeah, I, I think that, I think Ms. Horner, you provided me with some of the information. We, we know for a fact that because of our, whether you call it our aging population, our single resident population, whatever you want to use it, the term for, that there are people that just cannot generate enough garbage to serve, to satisfy the rates that we're paying, that they're paying. And we hear about it all the time. And so anything we can do to understand maybe what this every other week garbage project could look like or anything else, I think that we should just make sure that we have that information. So I would, I would absolutely be interested in that. I also think to Councilmember Nelson's point that providing, incentivizing the right behavior needs to come with benefit for those people who comply with that behavior, right? And so looking at a, a larger proportional increase in large versus small carts or other things like that, although I recognize that that's, you know, that can, that can have an impact on, you know, larger families and things like that too. So we have to be careful there. But I just think that there's a way for us to get a little bit more, I don't know what the right word is. One-size-fits-all isn't really, you know, great when you're trying to do something citywide, right? So maybe a little bit more options would be great. Thank you. Thanks for your help.
Before we go any further, and at the risk of being the least popular mayor in the room, what I'm going to propose, council, is rather than plowing through the rest of the presentation, I'm going to suggest that we move the fleet, the facilities, internal service funds, the public works general fund budgets, and then the information technology fund budget to our next meeting. We, we finish things up here. Yeah, I'm sorry, I know. Look at the daggers they're shooting at me right now. We finish this up, and then we get to the policy and issue update, and we, we don't go too, too far past 11:00. I think I would ask the council for a motion to, to both do that, to move those, continue those items till next time, but then also to extend our time to run no later than, say, 11, 11:10.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second on what I just said. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. I'm sorry, gang. We got a little talkative tonight, I apologize. So, no, it never happens. So, Cory, how about if we finish up this, this two seconds here to finish up? I think there's a couple of slides left that I saw, the, the utility bill, totals, that kind of thing. And then we can have that done and be done with it, and we'll wrap this section up.
So the next slide has all of the proposed rates combined from the four utility funds. There we go. So utility bills are sent once every eight weeks for residents. And you'll see on here, we have a comparison for kind of a small minimum usage, a medium, and a large, and what those different impacts would be. We also, in blue, have switched out the citywide curbside cleanup fee. Will now be on a utility bill as the bulky item management fee. So for small usage, two, $2.95 for a two-month period. Medium is $6.67, and large usage, $14.73. And then the next slide is just all the rates that we've talked about this evening together on one slide. So the water, wastewater, storm, garbage recycling, bulky, and organics.
Very good. Any questions on that summary there, council? And these four budgets will come before us again on November 14th. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I was just doing some last minute, excuse me, some last minute math here. And I, I just really wanted to comment because I think this gets to the point that, that some other folks here were making as far as how we can incentivize, you know, different, different opportunities, different choices for folks, but also how folks can save money. Because, I mean, if we look at the difference between that sort of minimum on the far-left side of that, that side that Cory just showed, the 1770 increase per year, that saves you about a buck 48 a month. And sort of the far-right side of that ledger is the 88, 38 increase. That's about $7.40 a month. And so I think what it, what it shows is, you know, that's a $6 a month difference, not hugely significant in terms of, huge significance in terms of a monthly budget, but it shows how it all. but it shows how it all adds up kind of over the course of the year and why it makes sense for folks to, to sort of think about these things in, in sort of an economy of scale. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, council member. Anything else? Well, we will pick up the, the budget discussion next time with our fleet and with fleet, facilities, internal service funds, public works general funds, and the information technology fund budget. So again, sorry about that. So, I'm sorry. Just worked that way. Moving on to item 5.6, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge. Oh, and just a note, I'll say, if, I hope no one's tuning in right about now, but we did do the artistry discussion. Item 5.5 was done earlier in this evening, just in case anybody's tuning in right now looking for that. So, item 5.6, city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of items for you. Airbuds aren't working, so I'm just going to take those out. Can you hear me okay without that in?
We can hear you just fine, yep.
Great, okay. So one item I did want to update on is Expo 2027. As council is aware, the inquiry mission from the Bureau of International Expositions was in Minnesota and Washington DC yesterday. And they were, yesterday, last week, they were vetting the Minnesota and USA application to host the World's Fair in 2027. There are four other locations that are competing for that, shared before, Argentina, Spain, Serbia, and Thailand. And the purpose of the inquiry mission is to do a thorough review of all of the details within the application, do a site visit, try to gauge the level of community and civic and business and governmental support, and make sure that the financial projections are reasonable and adequate. And generally, just get a strong feel for each of the communities. I think the feedback that we received last week was very positive from the members of the inquiry mission. And you probably saw that the governor hosted a press conference with the president of the inquiry mission and Senator Klobuchar as well, and they spoke very favorably. So the next step, and let me just, if anybody's watching this for the first time, Bloomington is proposed as the host community for the Minnesota USA Expo 2027. So let me talk real quickly about what happens next. The Bureau of International Expositions will have their general assembly at the end of November. Each of the candidates will make a presentation to the general assembly. And then it begins about a six-month campaign up until the subsequent general assembly in June of next year, when the delegates of the BIE, that's representatives of the 170 countries that are members of the BIE, will vote on what, what country will host 2027. So we have, we have a little bit of time before we know the answer to that. And, you know, I know there's been quite a bit of press around that visit, a couple of comments that I want to reiterate once again, that there is an independent nonprofit organization that has its own board and staff that is shepherding this application through. Bloomington is a partner with that organization. The mayor and I both sit on the board of directors. And that organization works closely with the federal government, especially with the State Department and the Commerce Department. The State Department has the voting delegate for the United States at the BIE. And those two federal agencies are responsible for expo-related activities in federal law. So the city is not responsible for this application. The, the funds that are supporting this are being raised by the 501(c)(6) organization, Minnesota USA Expo 2027. And again, that's a separate organization. They're responsible for all the fundraising and for the budget that's necessary to advance the application. If the Minnesota USA candidacy is voted and approved by the BIE, there would need to be a new organization because the current one is for the purposes of the campaign. They would pivot that to being a host committee, very similar, or at least as an analogy, the Super Bowl committee, when the Super Bowl was in Minnesota back in 2019. So it's a very similar structure in how the event itself would be managed. The role for the city is that we will continue to work with that committee, as well as our partners at the state of Minnesota and Hennepin County and the federal government to play our role as the host community. The reason that we have gotten into this project is, from the very beginning, our interest in economic development and the potential for expo to have a transformational effect on South Loop, to have permanent structures that will be converted after the expo into viable commercial operations that will, that will continue the build out of South Loop and continue to grow the tax base of the city of Bloomington. And then there are other legacy advantages and benefits from being a host community. And I think in consultation with the mayor, council members, I'm going to place a presentation on the council agenda so that we can go into this information in greater detail at a subsequent council meeting, likely in the middle of November. Any questions?
Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? No questions on that? Anything else, Mr. Verbrugge?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Quick recap of our city council listening session that was held earlier today. We had, I think, the highest number of speakers we've had at a, a listening session. Matthew Limpert, a first-time speaker, talked to us about issues with his evic, his efforts to evict tenants during the pandemic, which led to issues with mowing his grass and ultimately having it mowed by environmental health, and he missed the appeal process. So we had a good conversation, actually learned a little bit about the eviction process. And, and he, he did talk about the, the effect that the eviction moratorium had on, on landlords in the, in the city of Bloomington and elsewhere. So good conversation with Mr. Limpert. Sally Ness was before us again. Started the conversation talking about the use of a park and ended up with a, a conversation of the definition of what a public school is, whether or not a charter schools are public schools or not, which by definition specified very specifically and clearly in state law, they are public schools. Natalie Marose talked to us, wanting us to turn on the commenting on YouTube during city council meetings. We heard from Kevin Heinen. Mr. Heinen has had issues parking his work truck at his place of employment, where he's had issues with his catalytic converter being stolen. So now he's parking, parking his work truck at home and is having issues with environmental health, saying it's not illegally compliant truck parked in a, in a residential area. And Becky Jerkis, the president of the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra, raised some concerns about artistry and had to, we had a discussion about artistry. Unfortunately, that was very limited because of our, our time limitations at the, at that point. But I'm sure that both Becky and Jen Heron, who is the vice chair of Angelica Cantate, who was also looking to speak and wasn't able to because of time, I'm sure they'll be interested to know about our public hearing next week regarding artistry. So that was what we had in our city council listening session this evening. Mr. Sable, do you have anything to add?
Mayor, council members, I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. Council, anything? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Really quickly, a reminder that I am hosting the next town hall this Thursday, the 20th of October. I know I'm competing with MEA, but if you're in town, please come and join me. It'll be at Northwest Sciences University. Looking forward to hanging out with the public.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Hearing nothing else? Council, we are to the point where I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries seven zero. Council, thanks for your discussion this evening. Good job. Thank you to staff for sticking it out with us. And I'm sorry, we missed, we had some people who didn't get a chance to talk. Thank you to the members of the public who came forward and everybody who watched. Everybody have a good Tuesday. Thanks much.